I'd like to call this meeting in order of the Folsom Cordova Unified School District. Superintendent, if you can call roll, please.
Absolutely. Mr. Chalamchurla.
Here.
Ms. Larrett.
Here.
Ms. Lofthouse.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
All are present. Please note for the record that Ms. Larrett, Trustee Larrett, is joining us online.
All right. Thank you, sir. With that, we will close out, I mean, get out of closed session, I mean, head into closed session to discuss student matters, employer-employee relationships, conference with legal counsel, conference with real property negotiators, personnel matters, and other personnel matters, student matters. With that being said, we're into closed session. Good evening. Today is May 20th, and I called the, I called it order of the Folsom Cordova Unified School District Board of Education meeting. Superintendent, if you can call roll, please.
Yes, but for the record, it's May 15th. I appreciate your-
Oh, I'm sorry.
How eager you are.
Why am I thinking May 20?
No, I don't know. But on May 15th, I'll take for all.
You know, never mind. That's something else. Okay. It is May 15th, and I'd like to call this meeting of the Folsom Cordova Unified School District to order. Superintendent, will you please call roll?
My pleasure. Ms. George.
Here.
Mr. Merrill.
Here.
Mr. Chalamchurla.
Here.
Ms. Larrett.
Here.
Ms. Lofthouse.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
And I am here.
All are present with Trustee Larrett online.
All right. Thank you so much. And we will start with the land acknowledgement.
As the Folsom Cordova Unified School District, we acknowledge that our administrative facilities and schools occupy the unceded territory of the Nishnon and Miwok, the original people of the skies, land, and waters where we work and learn.
We also recognize the presence and ancestral stewardship of the Nishnon ancestral tribes, the Estonotamuse and Nisimpewinon to the north.
And the Miwok ancestral tribes, the Amishumi, Konsumne, Halepune, and Mukalune to the south along the great Sacramento River systems since time immemorial.
We understand that this land upon which our institutions are built was once flourishing with natural resources and sustained by the ancestral knowledge and practices of these indigenous communities.
We acknowledge the injustices of colonialism and attempted genocide that have impacted these communities and recognize the resilience of their descendants who continue to thrive today.
In our daily endeavors of teaching, learning, leadership, and community engagement, we commit to supporting, respecting, and honoring their culture, traditions, and lifestyles.
We pledge to work together for the evolving vision of the Miwok and Nishnon, especially all future generations.
Right. Thank you. And we will now go into the pledge. And I understand Courtney has been asked. So Courtney, if you're in the house, if you can please come up to the podium and be so kind as to lead us in the pledge. Yes, ma'am?
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. A broadcast and recording is being made at the direction of the board, and the broadcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Tonight's meeting is being livestreamed on the district's YouTube channel. The recording will be cable cast replays on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be closed captioned and video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Folsom Cordova Unified School District Board Policy 1313 promotes mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among employees, parents, and the public. We will treat staff, parents, and members of the public with respect and ask the same in return. If any member of the public uses obscenities or communicates in a demanding, loud, insulting, and/or demeaning manner, the board will calmly and politely admonish the person to communicate civilly. Public comments during board meetings are an important component of public engagement and transparency. Members of the public will not be permitted to yield their speaking time to another member of the public. No written comments have been received, and per the Brown Act, the board is not allowed to enter into two-way discussion on any matter not on the agenda. So with that being said, we will head into item D, District Recognition Month, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and Jewish American Heritage Month. Superintendent?
I believe I'm inviting FCLA President Kanan Peterson to the lecture.
Good evening, Board. We have a couple of wonderful presentations tonight. Before we start, we actually have the Malahan family here, and they are going to talk from Anginy Ranch. And for Asian American Heritage Month, they're going to talk about what school means to them. So, all right, guys. I'm going to stand out there with them and help them out a little bit.
Kanan, can you pull the microphone down just a little bit?
Yes.
Good evening. School means to me like a safe place to learn. The staff is friendly and the students are nice. People care for you when you're hurt. School is this place to have fun while learning. You could share ideas and have fun with them. School gives us the tools to be successful in life. This is what school means to me. Good evening. School means to me like a nice place and safe place to learn and make friends. Sure, sometimes you get sad, but it's only one moment in your life, so forget about it. School is an awesome and fun, fun place, and you are too. School is a safe place with caring people and cool people.
Right. Now, we're going to help you out here, because this one's going to be, you're going to hold it there. Your voice, let's help around. Go ahead, Sam.
What school means to me. School is where we learn what success means and how to achieve it with the help of our teachers. It is where we form our values and establish our identities. And form, for the first time, we learn skills that we may continue to develop, life experience, what helps in this community.
Perfect. Great job, guys. All right.
And I felt really bad. I said, "Don't worry, there's not going to be anyone here. It's going to be real quiet," you know, and bam. All right, next. We actually have Yvonne Thornton from Cordova High School. Hi, Yvonne. How are you? Come on up. You, I hope you do.
Hi there. I'm Yvonne Thornton. I'm a math teacher as well as the advisory coordinator for Cordova High. We do have a presentation. She's working on it right now. I'll give you a little overview of our presentation. So as advisory coordinator, I've been working on incorporating our heritage months and our cultural observances into our advisory content. And so we click, oh, I have the clicker. Oh, I just messed it up. How do I click? Oh, there, okay. So this month, I created this choice board for our students to access. That way, they are given opportunities to learn about the different cultural observances for the month, as well as giving them different modalities to access based on their learning needs. And what was really cool, too, is our 10th grade team was already working on a virtual Holocaust museum for our students in the first place. And so I used their pictures of all the artifacts that they designed as one of our resources for the students to access during advisory. So I just compiled all the bunch of different pictures from the museum that they created. It was a really cool collaboration amongst the 10th grade social studies and English team. And they, after the students learned about World War II and the Holocaust, and after reading the book Night, they created, they went on a virtual field trip, and they recreated the artifacts from that museum. And so our students here are here to share with us what they, what they created as a part of that virtual museum.
Hi, my name is Sofico, and this is the artifact that I have recreated. This is embroidered Mazza cover made for a lipstick family by their relative in 1931. A Mazza cover is a cloth or fabric container made to cover three pieces of Mazza, which are unleavened bread during the Passover Seder. Lipstick family members who survived the Holocaust immigrated to US. Later, they decided to donate this Mazza cover to the Holocaust Museum to share their story and their culture.
Good evening. My name is Helena Greenlee, and I am a sophomore at Cordova High School. My project is on the left-hand side. My artifact was inspired by three artists named Carl Robert Bodek, Kurt Carnwood Low, and Ryan Neal. According to the Yad Vashem Museum, Bodek and Low were artists at the Girls Camp. Bodek grew up in a traditional Jewish family and was transferred to many concentration camps in Germany and southern France. In April 1941, Bodek was transported to Camp Le Mille, where he taught painting and drew portraits of fellow prisoners. Tragically, he was moved to Drancy Camp and ultimately to Auschwitz, where he was murdered. Low, in contrast, studied at the Vienna Academy of Fine Arts in 1938, but was imprisoned for socialist activities. Later in 1940, Low was arrested and transported to Girls Camp. After many transports and with the assistance of the International Red Cross in Geneva, he was moved to Camp de Riva-Solz and was released in 1952. He spent the remainder of his life in Vienna and continued to be the, to be active as an artist. Finally, Ryan Neal was a student at Evenworth High School, whose grand prize-winning project at the Holocaust Center of Pittsburgh inspired me to reflect on the meaningful paintings made by Bodek and Low. In my project, the single butterfly flying symbolizes transformation, rebirth, and hope for the people who died in the concentration camps and those who survived. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie. I am a sophomore from Cordova High School, and my project was a doll. This doll was inspired by the book Night and how the Jews would be sent off to another concentration camp, and they would be rushed to pack things they would need to take that are important. Since they were only allowed to take a few items, I decided to do my project on a kid's point of view. The story that I made behind the doll was that there was a little girl named Toshka, and how her and her mom were being rushed to go, and she was being pulled away while packing, so she left behind her doll. A Jewish officer found the doll and took it and decided to donate it to a museum to spread awareness about the Holocaust, although till this day, he doesn't know what happened to, to the girl after she was taken. And that's my story behind the doll, and it's a point of view that I can only imagine happened to the Jewish kids. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And we have, from Vista, we have Jason Javier Watson. No, he's not. Perfect. His students. So if you are from Vista, would you, would you like to come on up? Come on up, ladies. Perfect. You can introduce yourself.
We have a presentation.
If you can just talk about your presentation.
Okay.
So my name is Leor Mano. I'm a junior at Vista de Lago, and I'm the president of the Jewish Heritage Club. This is Namaraeva. She's also a junior. She's the secretary of the club.
I'm Namavensvi. I'm the, I'm a freshman and I'm the treasurer of the club.
My name is Libby Klein. I'm also a freshman, and I'm the webmaster, meaning I handle all the social media.
So we wanted to talk to you today about Jewish American Heritage Month, but first wanted to tell you a little more about our club.
So as we said before, we are the Jewish Heritage Club of Vista de Lago High School. We were founded in 2021, so we've been running for about four years.
In our club, we talk about Jewish traditions and culture with faculty members and fellow students who are either Jewish or non-Jewish. We just take this opportunity to, like, value and acknowledge our culture and who we are, and to share with people that we see every day in our school. For example, in one of our club meetings, we play games that are traditionally Jewish with club members who are Jewish or non-Jewish. Another example that demonstrate our Jewish values of kindness and generosity is by donating to our retirement home, that contained, like, Jewish desserts and traditional foods.
In 1980s and 1990s, Congress passed laws to dedicate one week in either April or May for Jewish American Heritage Week. But then in 2006, Congress and some Jewish leaders, George W. Bush, to make it an entire month, and that's when he announced that May would be Jewish American Heritage Month.
Since it's Jewish American Heritage, Heritage Month, we also wanted to talk about some famous people that really helped do stuff in our world today, such as famous actresses, Andy Samberg and Scarlett Johansson, who helped enrich, enrich the media and entertainment that we have today. Another person that helped that is Stan Lee, also Jewish, and he created the Marvel Multiverse. But as long as creating the multiverse, he also created role models for kids all over the world. Albert Einstein, who was a genius and helped with science and helped us progress with science. And Ruth Bader Ginsburg, who was also in the Supreme Court Law, Supreme Court, and she helped establish many laws and helped with our justice. And it is important that we talk about them so that we can show how important these people are and how our world would be the same without them today.
Celebrating Jewish Heritage Month helps us as a community feel acknowledged and welcome. Like, as a minority in the United States, sometimes Jewish people feel like outsiders and like they don't belong. So acknowledging our heritage and culture helps us feel like we're represented and welcome in the community. Any questions? Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Peterson, and thank you, students, for your wonderful presentation. We will move into reporting out of closed session. Superintendent?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. We will look at the adoption of agenda. Entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Moved by Board Member Lofthouse.
I'll second.
Second by Board Member Reed. Superintendent?
Ms. George.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Chalamchurla.
Aye.
Ms. Larrett.
Aye.
Ms. Lofthouse.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. We will move on to item seven, agenda consent. I did forget to mention to the board that I will be pulling item L. But I will entertain a motion for the rest of them.
I'll move.
Moved by Board Member Lofthouse.
I'll second.
Second by Student Board Member Merrill. I expect you all to be active tonight. Superintendent?
Ms. George.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Chalamchurla.
Aye.
Ms. Larrett.
Aye.
Ms. Lofthouse.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. With that being said, Superintendent, before we move on to item L, I believe that you have some announcements.
I have a few announcements. I appreciate the board in their adoption and passing of the consent agenda. We have three new teammates, or some continuing teammates, but in new roles. First off, Folsom Cordova is pleased to announce Suzanne Borth as the new principal for Folsom Cordova Adult School for the 2025-2026 school year. With 24 years of experience in education, including 12 years serving the students at FCUSD schools, Ms. Borth is a recognizable and respected leader. Currently, she serves as an assistant principal at Kenny Continuation High School and Prospect Community Day School, where she brings educational expertise and a strong commitment to alternative education. In her new role, supporting adult learners throughout eastern Sacramento County, she continues her mission to create pathways to graduation and employment for all scholars. Her work reflects a deep dedication to the community and those we serve. Quote, "I am so excited to continue this journey with FCUSD and bring my wealth of experience to the amazing team at adult education," says Ms. Borth. "My goal is to collaborate with staff and scholars so that students may follow their dreams to diplomas, degrees, citizenship, and living wage employment." Please welcome Suzanne Borth.
Thank you all for this new opportunity. I love our community, and I just am glad that I get to continue to serve.
Thank you so much, Suzanne. Appreciate it. Folsom Cordova is pleased to announce that Noel Steadiford will become the new principal of Folsom Hills Elementary School for the 2025-2026 school year. Ms. Steadiford comes to us from the Buckeye Union School District with 22 years of educational experiments. For the past five years, Ms. Steadiford has served as the principal of William Brooks Elementary School. Her extensive background includes 17 years as a classroom teacher. She brings a variety of teaching experience, ranging from high school special education to various elementary grade levels. This rich experience informs her core administrative philosophy that every student possesses the capacity to learn and thrive, and her dedication to creating opportunities that empower students to discover and cultivate their full potential. Ms. Steadiford is a visible and engaged principal who cultivates strong relationships across campus. Her actions, presence in classrooms, on the playground, and throughout the school fosters connections with students and staff. You might recognize her from her runs on the local trails, as she already enjoys being part of the wider community. With two sons and extended family nearby, she's deeply connected to the area and now is eager to fully embrace the Folsom Hills community as its new principal. Please welcome Noel Steadiford.
I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity to join the Folsom Cordova School District. I'm really excited to be joining you guys. I'm really excited to be coming to Folsom Hills as their new principal, and I look forward to just a really great, positive transition into this next year. So thank you.
Thank you.
Folsom Cordova is pleased to announce Narita Cabrera as the new principal of Blanch Sprint Elementary School for the 2025-26 school year. A familiar face, Ms. Cabrera is the current assistant principal at White Rock Elementary. With 18 years of experience in education, she brings a wealth of knowledge in instructional leadership, academic coaching, and student support systems. Before her time in administration, Ms. Cabrera worked as a classroom teacher and academic support coach, focusing on instructional best practices, equity in education, and enhancing student's success through data-informed strategies. Ms. Cabrera believes that, quote, "Students thrive when they feel safe, seen, and supported academically, socially, and emotionally." She is committed to cultivating a positive school climate where every child, regardless of their background, is empowered to reach high standards, and every voice in the community is heard and valued. Ms. Cabrera lives in Folsom with her husband, three children, and two dogs. In her free time, she enjoys traveling with her family and watching her kids play sports. Please welcome to a new role, Ms. Narita Cabrera.
I want to say thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Swanson, for the warm welcome, board members, executive cabinet. Thank you, Blanch Sprint's staff for being here, and my old staff as well at White Rock for being here. I am so excited to serve the Blanch community, so thank you for this opportunity.
All right. Thank you and welcome. And is that it?
Yes, sir. Sorry. I was all wrapped up in all that. Yeah.
So if we can go to item I, L. I pulled it because I'm going to have to abstain for that because I'm actually on the Board of Managers for the San Joaquin section of CIF, is also the State Federation for CIF, so it would probably be of conflict of interest for me. But with that being said, Superintendent, if we can, I'll entertain a motion, and if you can call roll on that.
I'll move.
Moved by Board Member Lofthouse.
I'll second.
Second by Board Member Reed. Superintendent, if you can call roll, please.
Yes, sir. Ms. George.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Chalamchurla.
Aye.
Ms. Larrett.
Aye.
Ms. Lofthouse.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Abstained.
Motion carries four zero with one abstention.
Thank you, sir. All right. With that being said, we get to move on to item eight, which is going to be rough for me, because I'm going to say goodbye to two student board members. But before I do that, if you all notice that we are actually in our college gear. It is College Recognition Night, and we are doing it in honor of our two student board members, who, and today is their last meeting, that we're, we're going to miss. So we wanted to do, as a board, represent them, wear our college stuff, and, you know, give them words of gratitude. So I guess I can start off and, and just, you know, say thank you, Van. Dude, I mean, you're all over the place. You were an advocate. You were a planner. You had these outside-the-box ideas. And you pushed the student, this SAB forward, you and Mia. I mean, I think it tripled in size, almost. Yeah, and I mean, it was just incredible, the things that you guys were able to do. You know, the discussions that you had. And I'm going to tell you, your International Night, excellent. Loved it. It was great to see those different cultures out on stage. The one thing I did suggest to one of the students is that, you know, it kind of correlates with IFES. IFES is the following weekend. It'd be great to get those students out and showcase that. So something to think about, you'll be gone by then, but, you know, I just want to thank you, Van, for just being Mister All-Around. You know, you supported students, no matter if they were in elementary school. I think I ran into you at Beetlejuice, and you were supporting the kids there at Mitchell Middle School. And, you know, you were just everywhere. So I appreciate everything that you did. I wish you nothing but the best in your endeavors at UCLA. No A-Clap or whatever that was, Angela. But I just wish you the best, sir. So thank you. It's, it's been an experience for two years, serving with you. Ms. Mia, you've been active, too. Obviously, you were the co-chair of SAB along with Van. And you guys are getting things done. You were pulling students in to address the board on certain issues. And I know that you do work outside of the board and SAB with Hands for Hope. And myself being a board member of that, I just appreciate the work that you do. I hope you continue to do that, even though you'll, you'll be away a Fordham. I hope you keep in touch with that organization, because it's a great organization. And to both of you, I hope you check in with us and make sure that we're, we're still going and trying to make a positive difference for our students and the school. And if we slip up, please call us, okay, and check us. So with that being said, I will open it up to any of the other board members. Moving forward, Mr. Reed.
Yeah. Although I hear this is the second-to-last meeting, not the last meeting, right? Okay. But, so we'll probably do this twice, once next meeting, too. But, you know, I just want to thank both Van and Mia. I mean, you are probably the quintessential example of, of how board members perform and need to perform on, on school boards, whether it's FCUSD or honestly, you'd be an example for any other school district. So I'm very proud of both of you and everything that you've accomplished while being FCUSD students. I'm even more excited to see and hear all the great accomplishments that both of you are going to accomplish, not only in college, but post-college as well. you are going to accomplish, uh, not only in college, but, uh, uh, post-college as well. You both selected incredible schools, uh, one in-state and one out-of-state. So, I mean, that alone is an accomplishment, the, the institutions that you, uh, are attending. Although I, uh, Mia, I'm a, a little biased in that you're going to a fellow Jesuit school, so, uh, congratulations on that. New York City is gonna be a little different than, uh, Sacramento and Folsom, so, um, but I, I think you're gonna enjoy it. Just, uh, bring some heavy clothing in the wintertime, yeah. But congratulations to both of you.
Congratulations, first of all. I actually always get very teary-eyed in these things, so I'm gonna try not to, but, um, Van, I've actually known your mom since kindergarten, so we were, we went all the way through elementary school. And sitting up here, um, with you, I have kind of followed your entire life, um, along with, with social media because it's great for those things, but, um, and when, when I worked in the district, your mom and I would touch base on a regular basis too because my daughter is the same age as yours, as you. So, um, it's always been fun to kind of follow along with your life and then being able to sit up here the last two years with you, um, as an advocate for all students. And, um, you never once let that stray from what your purpose was. You asked really tough questions and, um, both of you did, and I would say never stop asking those tough questions. So, wherever you are and whatever you're doing, continue to ask those tough questions, continue to be an advocate for how you. Um, Mia, it's been a pleasure to get to know you. You are both exactly what every student board member should be. Um, and I know that you had the opportunity to meet a lot of others and they were a little jealous because you get paid in this district. That's probably why a lot of them wanted to talk to you, but also, um, you guys are advocates for your role as student board members, which is amazing. So, continue to do great work. Keep in touch, I'm gonna, I will with your mom regardless, so you can't run, but, um, so congratulations, you guys are both going to love college and do wonderful, so.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to echo what my colleagues said. I know I just joined you guys, what, six months ago, five months ago, as a new board member, uh, but I joined every SAB meeting except last one. So, I see your leadership style there. That's good. That's very encouraging. One day, you will come back here, maybe take over his seat, right? So, yeah, that's, that's a good seat to take over, guys, you know, good aim, so. But besides that though, you know, uh, I want to sincerely congratulate into both of you and, uh, I, I just want to give, I know you're already here. Bring us two more board members just like you, advocate for them. We need that continuation, right? So, congratulations and we'll see you again, you know, next week.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, Board Member Larrett?
Yeah, sorry, guys, I can't see you, so I'm kind of fly-by-minded a little bit, but my biggest regret is that I can't be there tonight with you guys. Um, you know, all I can say is that both of you have just, um, conducted yourself with a lot of grace and a lot of dignity, um, always asking those really, really thoughtful questions. Um, I know myself, um, have maybe come into meetings thinking one particular way and after kind of listening to your points of view, have definitely, um, considered other sides of issues and, you know, you definitely carry a lot of influence. And I really appreciate all the mentorship that you've also provided to our upcoming SAB members as well. You guys have been great role models for them and just appreciate all the hard work that you guys have put into it. We're gonna miss you, but we're very excited about hearing all of your future accomplishments that we know that you're gonna have and, um, look forward to having you come back and share those experiences with us and just want to congratulate you both.
All right, thank you. And if you all want to speak now or if you wanna?
Can I cut? President, no, don't be sorry, because just let them speak. I, I'll just start off by saying, I didn't know Van was in SAB since he was twelve by that picture up there, Van. Who's that guy? Right? So, um, as, as you mentioned, President Clark, uh, we're all in hoodies, the governance team, I just want to acknowledge, uh, all, our gift to you. We got your sizes and we all pitched in and, and we, we made sure to wrap you hopefully with your first cool college hoodie. I don't know if you've got UCLA and Fordham garb at home quite yet. First one?
Yeah.
Oh, so you'll remember us, wear it on campus, right? Right? And I, I'm, I'm, I'm wearing this, this Nevada one because my, as you guys know, my youngest daughter, Celia, who has been at a board meeting, she's a senior as well and she's, she's heading off to be a member of the Wolf Pack. But I just wanted to say, as it relates, echo everything. I think about leadership and around legacy, right? And I just think about two things, one for each of you. So, Van, you were part of last year's, uh, student board, uh, member team that, uh, was able to lobby for compensation. And so, I don't know if our community all knows that our student board members get paid the same that our, uh, the res, the regular elected board members do. And I think that is, uh, still a very good deal that we get, uh, for your leadership on this, so thank you for advocating that. Funny story about that is when you go, when we were down, uh, at the CSBA, everyone was jealous of you because you had all that walking-around money because you were getting paid for being a student board member. And then Mia, you-
Not that much money.
True. So, and then Mia, um, you, uh, helped Van in this first year facilitating by far the largest SAB, uh, in our history. And that is a really important legacy too because it sets the foundation for it continue to be strong and grow. And I can tell you in surrounding districts, there is no such thing as SAB. So, you're flying sort of blind without any sort of rulebook, so you guys are leading the way when it comes to that for our neighboring districts and neighboring communities to learn what it looks like to be amazing student leaders, to advocate for your colleagues, your peers, uh, in, at the dais. So, thank you so much for, uh, your two years and your one year of leadership. We're definitely gonna, definitely gonna miss you. So, all right, now, I've got certificates, but you want to say a few words?
Yes, of course.
Okay, yeah, of course.
Being on this governance team for two years has probably been like the biggest life-changing event ever. I mean, I'm only eighteen, but this, this governance team has absolutely shaped the course of my life. It got me interested in politics, it got me interested in education and how, you know, behind the scenes, how my education is made and doled out to me. I got to meet very amazing people, all of you on the board and also, um, everyone in the cabinet, all the district people. You guys have definitely changed my life for the better and I wouldn't, I don't, I don't even know what I could give you besides a, a thank you and I love all of you. I will absolutely carry the skills that you guys have told me that I have, um, and that I've demonstrated on this board, um, into my career at UCLA and obviously beyond UCLA. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm really emotional inside. I know I don't, it doesn't look like I'm that emotional outside, but I'm really thankful for being on this board and has been, even though board meetings might sound like really boring and like long and all that stuff, I look forward to them every single week. I look forward to studying the agenda, I look forward to, you know, dressing up, getting all dolled up and nice-looking, uh, to come and sit on this board and it's one of my favorite things of the entire week. But yeah, it's, I'd also like to thank Mia. Mia's been an amazing partner on this, uh, helping me co-run SAB and, uh, sitting up here on the dais with me, whether, whether we're typing on our little Google Doc that we have of our notes and kind of talking to each other without actually talking, um, or texting and kind of last-minute planning of any SAB, uh, meetings or events. She's been a great help to me and I definitely couldn't have done it alone. I couldn't have done it without Mia, so I'd like to thank Mia, I'd like to thank all of you, I'd like to thank, um, all the district people I've met who've changed my life for the better. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I want to start off by thanking Van for integrating me in and giving me all the legacy training, starting from summer, before I even stepped on to the dais. Matthew and Van were both helping me and I remember my first board meeting, I was really scared and I was like, oh, where's the Google Doc, uh, my board account, my actual account? I just, there were so many things and I, I really don't think I could have done it without a person who's been here for a year, so. And especially running the SAB meetings. I've been a part of SAB for, since freshman year, I think freshman year, we had like one meeting online, so, um, it's, it's crazy to be a part of something and then start leading it too. And, um, I definitely could not have done it without Van because it's such a, such a big group and I don't think people understand how hard it is to facilitate like ten-year-olds to eighteen-year-olds. So, it is, it is hard and all the Thursday nights that we've spent, or, yeah, all the Wednesday nights that we've spent making slides and making the agenda and making, oh, figure out what we're gonna say and what they're gonna say and which speakers are coming in and all of that. It's just been a crazy experience to have and experience and being allowed to go to LA and our district is super ni, super nice to us in that we always get food and we get paid and we get water bottles and we get hoodies and a lot of the other districts don't do that. So, um, I want to thank all of you guys for accepting me, opening, like, and just accepting me with open arms and just being such great people and having such great conversations and teaching me skills that I will be able to use for the rest of my life. And I want to thank the advisors too for helping with the SAB meetings and always being there to guide us. And, yeah, that's all I want to say, just thank you for all of that, so.
All right, thank you. Superintendent, if you want to go ahead and present, and, and actually, I would like to get a group shot-
Yep.
-down in front of the dais. And I would also like to call the advisors up too because they were a very important part of SAB in, in helping, uh, the growth of Van and Mia, uh, to become the leaders that they are. So, advisors, if you're here, please come up front as well, thank you. All right.
Excellent, excellent. That's highly balanced. All right, one, two, three.
All right, we'll go on into, uh, item nine. Public comment, time will be given to speakers at the discretion of the board chairperson. The law allows the public to address the board on any matter, not on the agenda, but the law prohibits action by the board on any non-agenda items. So, first up is Anushka, and Divit. And for the record, it is a student, two students.
Good evening, my greetings to Folsom Cordova Unified School District, the school board members, superintendents, teachers, students, parents, and all our local leaders and volunteers present here today. My name is Anushka Rajapadde, student in Sutter Middle School, and on behalf of BAPS Charities, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and share a little about who we are and what we do, both globally and right here in Sacramento. BAPS Charities is a volunteer-driven, international nonprofit organization operating in nine countries across five continents. Guided by our motto, the spirit of service, and symbolized by a flame resting in a crucible, our work centers around five, five key areas: health, awareness, educational services, humanitarian relief, under, environmental protection, and community empowerment. Through initiatives like walkathons, health fairs, and educational programs, we empower individuals to serve others while building stronger communities, locally and abroad. Right here in the Ranch of Cordova area, our dedicated volunteers lead several local initiatives, including free health fairs and awareness seminars, Children's Health and Safety Days, College Prep and Career Planning Seminars, annual food drives in partnership with Seva Diwali, COVID-19 Vaccine Clinics with Remedy RX, and Blood Donation Drives with IAS and Napurna Foundation and Vitalant Labs. We are also honored to support California North State University with COVID-19 relief funding, assisting their efforts to vaccinate our local communities. Our volunteers live, work, and raise their families in this community, and we are deeply committed to giving back in every way we can. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Divit and I'm here on behalf of BAPS Charities to extend a warm invitation to you and the Folsom Cordova Unified School District community to join us at our upcoming BAPS Charities Walk Run. This event is a vibrant tapestry woven with the threads of unity, service, and, and a shared commitment of making a tangible difference in the lives of others. This is more than just a walk or a run, it's an opportunity to connect with like-minded individuals, forge new friendships, and experience profound satisfaction of collective action. The date of the BAPS Charities Walk Run is on Sunday, June first, 2025, the time being from nine AM to twelve PM and the location at Stone Creek Park in Ranch of Cordova. Come be part of this community event where you'll get to receive, receive a commemorative event T-shirt, enjoy a yoga and stretching session, and enjoy refreshments and a light lunch. This event is more than just a walk, it's a celebration of community spirit and collective service. Each step taken helps support critical causes like blood drives, disaster relief efforts, and public health awareness initiatives, both locally and globally. In the Spirit of Service Walk Run 2025, it is a fun, family-friendly day focused on health, connection, and giving back. We hope you accept our warm invitation to seize a wonderful chance for the speaking of hope and collectively contribute to something meaningful. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir, and ma'am. Appreciate you both. Sierra, rule? And for the record, she is a student.
I was born at a very young age. The journey since then has been neither linear nor circular, but more of a flat spiral. You understand? Time, of course, is a hallway with no doors and we, the brave, walk it sideways. People often ask me, what's your plan? To which I respond, because plans are just feelings wearing clothes and I don't trust anything with a necktie. In the third act of my life, which I assume we're in now, I've learned nothing and forgotten even less. The key to success, they say, is consistency, but so is the key to soup, so I try not to get too caught up in semantics. The world today is filled with challenges, boxes without lids, horses without context, elevators, but we must endure, or at least vaguely tolerate. Some people are driven, I prefer personally to be pushed gently, like a shopping cart. Momentum is momentum. So, as we look forward to whatever this is, let us do with the calm confidence of a fax machine. In conclusion, or perhaps just in a sort of pause, remember that no matter where you go, there you are. And if you're not, someone probably moved. You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Now we have, uh, Nicole Heaney. Nicole?
Good evening, Superintendent and our board. Um, I wanted to start out by thanking you. We are grateful that the superintendent finally got the right people about our math pathway discussion in the right room and, and had that conversation two weeks ago. For, on behalf of all of the parents, we thank you for adjusting the, um, unequitable line that was drawn for those that could test and now all fifth graders who want to test can take these challenge placement tests. But tonight, we bring continuing concerns with the elimination of the honors, um, middle school math pathway. This policy is based on research by Joe Bowler. She has four key parts to her programs and studies. The first is a special curriculum. We love a special curriculum, we love all the work that she's done there. The second is extensive training of both the staff on, um, on the curriculum. And then third, there are lots of math coaches, math coaches for the teachers, math coaches for the students. And then finally, the only part that we hear our district is implementing is the de-tracking of the math classes themselves. How can we expect equivalent results when we are cherry-picking one small portion of her program? Another important thing I've learned is that our district, we have the integrated math curriculum. There is no curriculum written yet that is for the integrated math curriculum that goes along with this Joe Bowler, um, program. It's being written right now, no one's piloted, we don't, we don't know what results we'll actually get if we try and implement that one. Let's look at school districts that have implemented this, right? The most famous is San Francisco, they tried for ten years with coaches, with training, with curriculum, and they were not able to get the- with coaches, with training, with curriculum, and they were not able to get the results they were promised. In fact, they finally stopped because there was a city ballot measure, and eighty-two percent of the city voted to end this math experiment on their children and return to the prior pathways that they had been following. It was also tried in Palo Alto. I could not find if they're still implementing it, but they lost a costly lawsuit where they had to, they were ordered to make a process for appealing math placements and collect data about how that policy was working out for them. Cambridge, Massachusetts, home to MIT and Harvard's grad student programs, we lived there while my husband attended, tried for one year before they gave up because it was such a flaming disaster. We ask that a better look is taken at this program before it is implemented. Our students deserve better. A well-researched, proven program that will bring math learning to all students at a greater level. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Ashwin. Falcon Academy.
I'm waiting for some of our students to come over. I'm Ashwin Thirunahari, and good evening, members of the board. I represent Falcon Academy, and we have been doing robotics program here in Folsom Middle School and Mitchell Middle School for the last three years now. And we are here today to thank you for all your support because that has helped this year more than hundred students from various schools from FCUSD. So before I go speak further, I would like to introduce at least a couple of students to talk about their experiences and what they have done. I would like to request Mr. Akash.
Good evening. My name is Akash and I'm here on behalf of Falcon Academy. We'd like to sincerely thank you for allowing us to use one of your schools' rooms for our meetings and work sessions. It has made a huge difference in what we've been able to accomplish, and we're very grateful for the support. As we continue to grow, we found that having more access time to the room would really help us. Additional hours or even having access over the weekends would allow us to better prepare for competitions. We understand that space is limited, and we truly appreciate what's already been provided. If there's any possibility to extend our access, we'd be extremely thankful. Thank you again for your continued support of our teams.
So I want to introduce Arjun, who is our elementary school student.
My name is Arjun Ganti. I'm a fifth grader from Theater Dura Elementary, transitioning to start of middle school next year. I'm here tonight to ask to include additional robotics facilities for all of us. It would really help for robotics facilities because we have this room to fit a lot of people. Access to this room more often will create a greater opportunity for us to win competitions and possibly higher-level competitions, which would bring a name to Folsom. And we all want to bring a name to Folsom and our district, do we? Let's provide this opportunity for all of us. Thank you for letting me address you.
Thank you, Arjun. I also like to request Pajan and Prayan to present a small token of appreciation to the administration, I want to give to Mr. Superintendent, and one to the board. And just show it. These are some of the awards our students have won. And Ronak, he brought one of the robots. This is from middle school. And high school robots is a lot more complex than this, and you know, they have all represented FCUSD and have won quite a few awards. We are still growing here in Folsom, and just to give you a sense, what's possible, Roseville has more than five hundred students who participate in robotics. And Folsom, although hundred students participated, only thirty-five students were participating in competitive programs. So it has been a huge challenge to compete against five hundred team. Again, so FCUSD, still we won competitions, but you know, supporting this environment, I think, will help more than five hundred students, I can believe, from FCUSD to compete against Roseville. Similarly, Davis has funded, almost, City of Davis and DJUSD together collaborated and funded eight-dollar, five-million robotics lab just to build competitive robotic spirit in their community. But I am here to just request support by extending access to the school space, which is space during summer and space during school year from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM on weekdays. That will really, as Akash mentioned, that will really help us, our students' ability and increase participation and prepare for higher-level competitions. Thank you so much. Really appreciate for what you guys have done, and we brought some cookies for everyone. And we have some flyers. We left it there if somebody wants to understand what we do. Thank you so much.
Right, thank you, Ashwin. Appreciate you. Ashwin, has robots made those cookies or what?
That's the next iteration. Yeah, thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Good evening, board, Mr. President, Mr. Swanson. We didn't realize it was a board meeting today. It's just been so crazy, so much things going on. We rushed from ARC. Glad today's the last day. I had to take Faith over there and tell, I don't know. So we got an email from Williams. Not sure if it's from Williams, but it has her name on there, saying that they're going to accept Faith in the Jazz Choir. One thing that is, we can see all the results, so we can see everyone in there. And we see this C-band that's really a combo, small, and we see a combo section. But like we mentioned before, Faith's desire was to sing in the Jazz Choir and to play her violin. So it's still half-full. I appreciate you, Mr. Swanson. I mean, just even besides this ordeal, I saw another video that popped up in my feed on YouTube with the two student board members, and it's amazing. I mean, I see the change happening. My question is, is you coming on board, is it too late? I mean, we're trying to process all of this. Be putting Faith at ARC, and the ARC Jazz Choir comes to Folsom High Jazz Audition and leaves halfway. And then seeing everyone who showed up to audition is accepted. I mean, we've made mention many times, why are students even denied? Have an extracurricular you deny? Have a class where people can learn Jazz Choir, and then maybe even in there, there's a test, and then those people are the ones that compete on an extracurricular activity. There's, I mean, we have so many questions. I know Faith is afraid. We're taking it step by step. We'll start the therapy, and we're thankful for that. I did get the CDE ruling denying. But one thing that was unique, my friend said, is like, you have to understand that these CDE appeals, they're just little, they're little things. It's not really what you need. And the truth is, is I guess if we did go to court, we would be taking the state to court. It's a big mountain, but way before you came here, they've been doing this discrimination and throwing chairs and throwing drumsticks at students for a long time. So I just want to make sure that it stops. It doesn't continue. Even past whenever you retire, and I hope your contract doesn't get extended past the three years. I think you've been doing a lot of great for the community here. I thank you for that.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Smith. And Faith Smith. For the record, she is a student. Please allow four minutes.
Hello, my name is Faith Smith. So next year, I'll be a senior, and as my dad just said, I did get accepted into the Jazz Choir this year, finally. It's my fourth audition, and I was constantly denied without reason. So now I'm accepted, and I'm glad that everyone got accepted as well. But I also saw that there's a jazz combo, which was not, I had no clue that that was going to be even an option on there because it was not there before. Before, the excuse on why I couldn't play violin was there's no part for me in jazz band, which is not true. I can play any part. But in combo, there's this thing called a lead sheet, so it's just a melody. Anyone can play the melody. Any instrument can play the melody. A singer can sing the melody. You can have a clarinet play the melody. Cellist can play the melody. Anyone can play the melody. Most of these lead sheets come out of this thing called the reel book. It's a book of a bunch of jazz standards. There are different reel books. There's a C for C-instruments, which would be like flute, violin. There's the B-flats, which would be trumpet sax or tenor sax. And then there's the bass, which would be, oh yeah, and there's also E-flat too, or alto saxophone. So that means that you can have any instrument in the jazz combo. So why can't I be in the jazz combo? Now, since I am accepted into the Jazz Choir, and I will be a senior next year, and I will be going, am I going to be retaliated against continuously still? I was already put in the closet. She already told me, "You can't get a syllabus. You have to meet with me first." She's constantly retaliated against me, and then the CDE said that she did. So, but then she retaliated against me after that order, after that decision. So that means that that decision didn't stop her. So is she going to continue to retaliate or not? I don't know, and there hasn't been anything in place that's going to prevent her from retaliating. I mean, you're not going to be in the room when it happens. So how am I supposed to make sure that I'm not retaliated against again? So I want you to think about that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Faith. And Abel Yameen?
Hello, this is my first, I guess, board meeting, but I'm a former student. I went to school at Gallardo, Sutter, and Folsom High. And I kind of just want to talk about, I'm not too sure how much has changed. I graduated in like 2020. But at least the time that I was there, like going to the elementary, middle school, high school, bullying was definitely like a big thing. So I'm not too sure how much has changed since then, but I just wanted to say at least for me that went through those schools and stuff, that I think it's like, and I can't censor myself, but it's a shit thing to teach kids, like, that them retaliating to their bullies or abusers is to like be met with punishment. So I just want to put that there, and I hope things have changed since I've graduated. But yeah, like the idea of jeopardizing someone's future possibly, like having something on their record just for defending themselves, like I remember my teachers like reinforcing that, just being like, hey, like, it doesn't matter, like, as long as there's an altercation, there's, you're going to get suspended, and that's going to be on your thing forever. So I just hope things have changed and are different now. So that's all I just wanted to say. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. All right, that is all of our in-person public comments, any online. Thank you, ma'am. We will go into reports of district organizations. All right, the student advisory board.
So we're going to begin our district organization report with a recap of our past month as SAB. On May 8th, we had our final SAB meeting at Folsom High. It was a little celebratory meeting. We kind of went over the whole year, what are some things we could change next year? Obviously, I won't be the things implementing that change, but you know, we're going to relay that to our next board members. We also went over International Night and kind of some pros, what went well, what didn't go well, what was your favorite part about it? With SAB, I believe we received overwhelming success and positivity about it, and I'm really glad. From my point of view, International Night was a lot smoother than it was last year, especially backstage. And I think overall, it was much more of a refined event, and I'm really looking forward to get it being, you know, more refined as it goes on, because I mean, that was only the third iteration of it. That was the third annual. Well, you guys should be expecting a fourth annual and then one next year.
And going back to our May SAB meeting, we gave everyone awards for their participation and for coming to every single meeting because they do have to miss school the first Thursday of every month, the first or second Thursday. So it is a pretty big task that they take on, and we awarded them. And Mitchell Middle School actually had the most, the best attendance, the most outstanding attendance. And Folsom Middle had the most amount of participation, and they had second-best attendance. So we recognized them as well, and all the hard work all those students have put in, all the time they've put in, and all the effort that they've put in for International Night and for the Winter Festival and for, at the meeting, they were talking about how they really enjoyed being part of the district food tasting for lunches next year. That was their favorite part, and so they got to have a little say in what they have for lunch in the coming school years. And we are rolling out admissions this year for SAB, and they've been accepted, they've been looked at, and they know. And it's really exciting to see SAB grow from just this very small organization that had that had just like one or two students from each school. Now we have around ten to fifteen per school. So it's huge, and our next board members will get to take that on, and we would actually like to introduce them right now.
Yeah, so the celebration doesn't end with just us. We'd like to be passing the torch to our next student board members. So I'd like to welcome up Evelyn and Addie to the podium. Now, as the Ranch of Cordova student board member, I will be introducing my dear friend Evelyn. Evelyn Lopez-Patarca is an eleventh grader currently at Cordova High School. She'll be entering 12th grade next year. She will be serving as the ASB Vice President of Student Government, and she is incredibly involved in community service throughout all of her high school career through clubs like Mentors at Cordova High School and Interact. Yep, the advisor right there, Ms. Thornton. I am deeply honored to be introducing her to you all today, and I hope you guys hold the exact same excitement that I have for the upcoming school year with her on this board governance team. So welcome, Evelyn. Yay!
Thank you, everyone, for having me today. I'm excited, and I'm very grateful for this opportunity, and I can't wait to work with all of you guys and Addie.
And as the Folsom student board member, I would like to introduce Addie, and all of us have met Addie before because she actually made our climate impact resolution, and she's worked with many, she's worked with all the advisors before, and she's especially worked with Mr. Maroon, and we've had multiple meetings for that climate change resolution. And so she's been getting very involved, and even though she wasn't part of SAB, she was still very, very active this year. And she's been to the meetings, and she's seen how everything has worked, and she actually had to sit through one of our longer meetings to present about the climate change resolution. And for everyone here, she's the reason that we have these water bottles, actually. So she's already integrated into our board and on the dais, so we're very excited to have you. And she ran over from Sacramento to be here today, so she's very dedicated, and from everything that I've seen, she will phenomenally represent Folsom, and I'm sure both of you guys will take care of our district. And I'm excited to train you guys to be up here and just see everything that you guys do. So me and, we both want to welcome you on, and Addie, you can say what you want to say.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mia. That was real so nice. I had the best time campaigning. It was not something that I originally wanted to do. I remember when I was doing the like, doing all of the climate advocacy stuff. doing all of the climate advocacy stuff, I was like, wow, that's like a really cool position to like be up there. And, um, Mia was kind of like encouraging me and like my teachers were also like really supportive of me doing it, so. Thank you to, uh, my principal for recommending me and all my teachers and my friends and everyone who voted for me, I had such a fun time and I'm really excited for the experience ahead.
Um, I would ask you guys, do you guys wanna take a picture with our new student board members? I think that would be.
Sure.
Awesome.
I did not dress for this.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay, one, two, three. Awesome.
So those of you who don't know, these student board members actually campaigned in their, uh, their cities um, and they were elected by students, so we had no say in this, the adults had no say in this, it was students only, so. It's a great accomplishment that they are sitting up here and they won that campaign, so, yeah, I, I'm very happy, I'm very proud.
Awesome, well, welcome aboard and look forward to working with both of you. Alright, um, let's go with the, uh, Cordova School Employees Association. California School Employees Association. I don't have these on. I don't have mine on either, so. Well, my report's gonna be fairly short tonight, uh, we have a final chapter meeting set up for May twenty eighth, we do have eight items on the agenda, uh, M O U's, combination of M O U's and job descriptions. I'm not gonna bore you with the details right now, I will email them all to you if you'd like. Um, those will all be up for ratification on twenty eighth and we're looking forward to the last two weeks of school year. Have a good day. Alright, Folsom Cordova Education Association.
Running off.
We're doing a quick picture with their advisors out there.
Alright, so good evening board, um, F C U S administrators, certificating classified staff and those online who are joining us tonight. On May seventh, F C E A presented a compensation and working conditions counter to the district. We tried to restructure compensation to address changes in the economics and to address Sean's concerns about the effects of compounding on a three-year budget. Basically sent that summary presentation to you earlier this week, I hope that you have taken the time to review and will reach out if you have any questions. Based upon input from our members over the last two years, we added a non-monetary item to the counter. My grants cannot be bargainable, the money spent on conferences and consultations, trainings greatly affects our membership. Sean has suggested in Schedule of Pluthera, a budget meetings known as BAC, E A C, for next year. One aspect of the committee F C E A is hoping to incorporate is reviewing the grants the district receives. This idea is like of a school bond committee. A committee cannot tell the district departments what to spend funds on, but will provide oversight that the management of those funds have been planned, well thought out, executed and has center, student-centered metrics. Making sure that we are all good students of the funds of our district. In our slides, the amount of initiatives that the district has implemented has been staggering and although these initiatives. Are thought to be under one umbrella, it seems that the umbrella is multi-pronged with lots of layers. What F C A members want to know are these initiatives and dollars spent moving the needle for students? As more and more is tossed upon our plates, not retaining staff becomes a cost of its own. Our attention rates for some subgroups or sites have not been great. This year was the first year I have experienced late non-reelects, which not only affect the person's morale, but the entire staffs as well. And last but probably not most costly, the absence rates and number of members on leave have increased. Not only is our district paying for that employee, their salary through sick leave, but also the guest teacher to replace staff. This fall, we will be welcoming another hundred and fifty plus new teachers. Or new certified staff. This is the third year in a row that we have had this many, I do not know, I do know that some of those individuals are covering teachers on special assignment like myself. But can our district really state that we are retaining our teachers to the best of our ability? Is this district where marginalized groups want to work? Or that mid-career teachers want to stay and become the old guard? We continue to work with the district to solve problems such as mandatory training. The state of California mandates two hundred and twenty minutes of training with an additional sixty minutes every other year, with an additional hundred and forty-five minutes required of new hires. While we were unable to reach an agreement on the, an M O U on this issue, we did come to a favorable agreement that will be sent out in a joint communication soon that gives sites flexibility on when and where to carve out three hours of time to facilitate these required training sessions. As this board looks and reviews our offer and considers all facets of the proposal, remember a boat is really only as good as its crew. And our members are the crew of this district. If the district wants to improve the relationship with its crew, then we need to have a limited and focused set of priorities that allows us to serve our students and not be crushed by the demoralizing and impossible workload and to show through your decisions that we matter, thank you.
Thank you. Folsom Cordova Leadership Association.
Good evening, uh, good evening Superintendent Swanson, uh, Board President Clark, uh, members of the board. Tonight is my final, uh, board meeting report for, uh, Z F C L A president and it's been an honor to serve in this capacity and I'd like to highlight a few items as the management association and all the things that we've accomplished this, uh, this year. Many schools have been up at the podium this, uh, this year and shared about, uh, all the ways that they open the schools, all the way that we are building connections, uh, a good friend of mine said one percent better every day. And, uh, uh, but how we are doing that every single day. Uh, two students were awarded every, uh, every student succeeding awards along with, uh, scholarship money. Uh, we worked with, uh, Dr. S- uh, Mr. Swanson and Dr. Ogden collaboratively to, uh, support our leaders at the school. With the direction, uh, and support of Dr. Ogden, we were able to meet monthly, uh, as an association to work collaboratively towards a common goal in supporting our students and our F C U S D, uh, leadership, so Dawn, thank you so much. Um, uh, we deepened our relationships with colleagues during social be, uh, socials, meetings and professional, uh, development. Our team of highly knowledgeable managers presented at conferences all over the state, in the country, sharing and investing in our educators. Uh, we served on, uh, state and national committees and advocated for students both at the state and national level. We know that, uh, Huntlin and Amy Strong were celebrated as A X A Members of the, uh, um, A X Administrator of the Year Award. Dr. Daniels was recognized, uh, this year as the twenty twenty-five National Association of Secondary School Administrators for her advocacy. And, uh, and finally, we were, uh, we reminded each other to take care of ourselves and our families and our loved ones and our staff and our students. Um, I will now be entering, uh, the past president role, but will forever be, uh, grateful for this opportunity to listen, encourage and to, uh, serve my fellow S C O S D leaders, have a great night.
Right, thank you Mr. Peterson. District English Learner Advisory Committee, D L A C.
No report this evening.
Thank you sir. Uh, Board Committee Reports? That includes our two-by-two ad hoc meetings, um, any, where are my notes?
I, um, I'll just speak up, uh, as for me, uh, in, since the last board meeting, uh, I have not had any committee meetings meet, so. Uh, no, no report from me tonight.
Alright, thank you sir. Uh, any other committee meetings?
No committee meetings, Mr. President.
We, sorry guys, um, we did have a safety committee meeting, uh, last week, um, and we um, did a final review on the S R O contracts, which are gonna be upcoming out on the agenda, um, and, uh, one of our big initiatives this year was really starting to tackle the vaping issues that we have, um, and just happy to report that there was, uh, uh, two bathrooms at both Folsom and at Cordova where they, um, did some, uh, vaping sensors in the bathrooms and they took some data prior to the kids knowing that the sensors were there and then after and we saw some significant decreases in the vaping in the bathrooms. So, um, that was, uh, a really good positive outcome for that. Um, and so just gonna be continuing on working on some vaping initiatives, um, education components to work with students at younger ages and, um, just kind of talked about some of the initiatives that we had this past year, um, lot of work with our campus monitors and working with, um, their contracts and working with them on some zoning, uh, defense and things like that at the schools. Um, so definitely made a lot of progress on the safety committee this year, um, and there was an email that did go out to parents to invite them to join the safety committee for this upcoming school year, so hopefully we'll have, um, some additional parent participation this coming school year. And that's my report.
Alright, thank you ma'am. Uh, this morning, uh, Superintendent Swanson and I did, uh, fit in on the Cordova uh, Recreation and Park District two-by-two ad hoc committee. Um, we discussed a few things, one, the tennis courts at Hagan Community Park next to Cordova High School, uh, which was kind of an interesting, um, subject that they are looking to, Superintendent, correct me, uh, do some kind of swap. Um, as far as Cordova and Dave Roberts Community Park and I know that there are some options that we're looking at, so I look forward to hearing what those options are. Uh, we also discussed the, uh, Mather Heights Fence Project. Um, and then a very interesting discussion and I, hopefully one day we'll find the funds for it, is to move, uh, Cordova High, uh, their baseball field on campus somehow. And I think that would be great, a great attraction, um, for the community to come out and support our lancers on the baseball field. Um, we were grateful for, uh, parks and, uh, rec, uh, program and their, uh, families and staff, uh, that helped families in transition, uh, donations of gift cards, food, clothing. Uh, so we as a district are eternally grateful, uh, for their donations. Um, we touched on obviously our staff, uh, Appreciation Day at Hagan. Um, they asked how it was, um, it was, you know, great event and they were very supportive, so we thank them for their support on that. Um, Superintendent, did you have anything else that you wanted to add on there?
I think you covered it, the, the one last item on the agenda that we didn't talk too much about is they just wanted to mention that they know that, uh, F C U S D is interested in starting up again our foundation. And we've been working on that throughout this year, uh, with the foundation potentially being up and running in the fall, that's the goal. And they had a similar trajectory with their own foundation and offered their support if we have any questions along the way, so that was really helpful.
Alright. Uh, yes, Mr. Reed?
Yeah, uh, Mr. President, uh, just a, uh, quick question, uh, you had mentioned a, a swap, do you mean where, uh, the land where the tennis courts are from Hagan would be transferred to the district and we would provide a similar land swap to, uh, Roberts Park, is that what you meant by swap?
Yeah.
Well, it, it was, the, they are just spitballing.
Right.
Our facilities team, uh, and, and our C B O was not, our facility team was, but our C B O was not present, so it was just an initial conversation, but what they had mentioned was that the tennis courts at Dave Roberts need refurbishing. So it wasn't a land swap, it was we'll offer you land if you help with some capital improvements for us.
Okay, yeah, alright, and then one of the questions I did ask is, you know, repair and replace the lights at Cordova High, um, I guess, I don't know if they, if they need repairing or replacement, uh, but I think Matt and his crew will be looking at that to determine what is needed and also the cost of everything, so, um, was there anything else? Okay.
Alright, thank you for the clarification.
Yes, alright. Uh, with that being said, we will move on over to item eleven, discussion action. We'll go with A, approve the annual school resource officers S R O agreement between Folsom Cordova Unified School District and the, and the city of Folsom Police Department and the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office uh, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, Superintendent.
Yes, sir. Welcome Dr. Don Ogden up to the lectern to talk a little bit about this while he's, uh, walking up. Uh, we, as a reminder to the board, our last board meeting, I believe it was our last board meeting, we did bring this as a discussion item and so we had some conversation. Uh, one of the asks from the board was some language shifts around professional development. That was the biggest ask, was moving from a may attend to shall upon the district's request for S R O officers. Uh, since that meeting, I have met, uh, with Chief Hillman and, uh, from Folsom Police Department and Chief Tamile from Rancho Cordova uh, Police Department and had really great meetings, they were quite fruitful. Uh, talking about this year's successes and challenges, our goals for next year, as well as the language change, uh, as it relates to the proposed contract and both chiefs were totally on board and I really appreciated their support, they even had some additional ideas for growth and development of our partnership as it relates to S R Os, um, being on campus and, and spending quality time with our students playing basketball and doing other things like that, um, offering, so. Um, Dawn, I hope I didn't steal your thunder. I don't know if there's any questions from the board, cuz it's just up for a vote tonight unless there's anything additional, sir.
And to clarify what this contract's agreeing to?
Yes, please.
So, uh, in, with both, uh, law enforcement agencies, we have a contract to, uh, to contract their law enforcement officers. One, uh, contract is with Folsom Police Department, we contract to have two school resource officers, their employees of the Folsom Police Department, we split the cost for the two employees. Uh, also in Rancho Cordova, we have Rancho Cordova Police, uh, Department, we have a M O U with them also. Again, it's for two school resource officers, their employees of the Rancho Cordova Police Department. However, they work with us with this M O U, uh, full-time as school resource officers, we split the cost of those two. Um, in the past, uh, we have talked about, you know, do we want a third S R O? There's no contract language about a third or M O U agreement about a third S R O. However, this is something that has been addressed, um, every year that I've been on the sa- safety committee, the discussion has been, you know, do we have two or three, so, uh, this next year, we're contracting for two from each agencies. But that doesn't mean we won't talk about that again going forward.
Okay, uh, any questions from the board?
I have a question, just a comment, I just wanna say thank you, um, for pushing that forward, um. I feel like a broken record with this, but I really, really, truly wanna advocate for these, um, S R Os to be resources, resources on our school sites and so I think providing them with, um, student-focused um, professional development will be a really huge first step and making that an important part of the contract, so. I just wanna say thank you, um, over the past year when we've kind of been pushing this a little bit harder um, and wanting to see it, um, I think we're seeing some improvement and one percent better every day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions? I mean, I do have one, but I would extend the opportunity to the board first.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, yeah, thank you very much for, um, getting this, uh, agreement put together. Uh, I, it, this is a comment, not a question. Um, we, we, as a district, used to have three S R Os, um, prior to the pandemic, prior to the George Floyd, uh, tragedy. Uh, we did have three resource officers from each city. Uh, having three, um, had some benefits, including, uh, they work a four-day week. So, currently Monday and Friday, we only have one s- resource officer covering an entire city, in both cities. Uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we have two. Uh, it, when you had three resource officers, you always had that extra coverage on Monday and Friday. Uh, I, I would like to see, not for this year's contract, but I really would like to see some dialogue about adding a third resource officer from each city, um, uh, in the next. About adding a third resource officer from each city um uh in the next school year. Uh you know, and and you know, obviously, a lot of changes have been made since twenty-twenty and and the George Floyd uh tragedy. Uh I think we had a contract with both cities that was very dated, archaic even. Uh in fact, uh gosh, if memory serves me correct, it might have even been typed out. Not on a computer, but on a typewriter, it was just one of those things that just kept on getting uh uh re-approved year after year after year. With with not a lot of uh of review. And I think um the the result of the tragedy was that. We took a fresh look at basically every single word on that contract and we revised it. And the following year, we revised it more, and the following year, we revised it more. But we're at a point where we're changing one word now. Potentially, again, I'm not saying, you know, year to year is fine, but you know. Potentially, at some point, we might also consider a multi-year contract rather than just year after year. Um the prior contracts prior to twenty-twenty were multi-year contracts. So uh again, I I I have no, I guess, opinion one way or the other, it's just something to potentially think about. Uh but I I would uh like to see a third SRO in both cities, um uh at least being discussed uh for the future. But uh thank you very much for all your uh and the team's effort uh with this uh agreement. Uh and I like the change from the may to the shall, I think that was a good addition, so I appreciate it.
Right, thank you, uh any other questions from the board?
Okay, so I have a. I would like to give a shout out to DT Martin. DT Martin is our liaison with uh with law enforcement. That is a new position that we created as, you know, part of our overhaul of this uh the safety, you know, uh initiative. And DT was instrumental in working with law enforcement, getting this language changed, so I think, shout out to DT.
Alright, alright, so a few things. The idea of a third SRO, um that'd be great, but who's paying for it? That would be my first question. Because, you know, right now, we're uh looking at an increase of maybe, what is it? Thirty-nine thousand from the last year, uh from two-hundred-and-fifty. Uh thousand to two-eighty-nine, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars, to be exact. If you're looking at getting a maybe a multi-year con- contract. I can see nothing but the price going up on that and I don't know how we would be able to figure that out, so that's one. And again, a question, if you're doing a third SRO, who's gonna pay for it? Because I'm not in favor of district paying for it, I'd rather see that money go somewhere else, just to be totally honest with you. Also, the may to shall, and it's great that, you know, we're honing in on professional development and all that good stuff. But how do we hold these officers accountable and how do we know that they're even going to these trainings? Is it something that was discussed? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, it wasn't discussed explicitly, but what I understand from the professional development offerings, they would be with our team. So we would know that that it's not that we're not sending them off independent, it's it's similar to uh Trustee Lofthouse point around. Learning more about the work that school educators do and being partnering with them. So there's a conference in the spring, it's the CASWA Conference, it's a conference for the state for the child welfare and attendance officers and. I think this year it was in Anaheim and it's a really great o- o- opportunity for them to learn. I know that the Rancho Cordova Police Officers have gone in the past, none of them were able to go this year. That would be something for us in the future to be thinking about, yeah, that is a a shall. Because there's a lot of really great opportunities for them to learn at that, but then other conferences as well, so we would know they were there because we would be there with them.
Okay, awesome. And then the other question that I had is. Out of the surrounding districts, how many have SROs?
Yeah, I did not get that answer, I have that out, so I have that to DT. Um I asked um San San Juan, Sacramento City, um Elk Grove and. Twin Rivers.
Yeah.
I know they have their own police department.
They do.
Um but I have not heard back from DT, I I believe he's actually out this week, but I'll get you an answer.
Yeah.
I'll get the board an answer.
Curious, I mean, you know.
Dawn, do you happen to know right offhand?
Well, I I can tell you that when we studied our SROs a couple of years ago, uh we looked at different models. So there's various models out there, there are districts that have no SROs at all. There's um districts like ours, which have a hybrid, where we have a school safety coordinators and and positions that are specific to school safety. That are our employees as well as SROs, and there are districts that have all SROs. And then even the all SRO districts, there are different ways that they deploy them. So for example, ours, uh and and it's a very strong opinion by both of the law enforcement agencies. Ours come with their full uniform when they come on campus. The other ones, uh one other, one other, not all of them, but one other district shared, they had what they called a soft uniform, which was. Uh not the same, it was a polo shirt and, you know, I don't think they had a a weapon, so. There are, there are, there are different models out there for sure.
Right, yeah, I I know over the past years, we try to work with our law enforcement to have more of a. Cash, uh you know, appearance, but I I guess they weren't going for that and it's all good. Yeah, I'm just kinda curious of.
Your president, really quick, um YK, I think you can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm pretty sure, not the the safety committee meeting that we just had, but the one before. Um that Mr. Martin did say that um that districts that had gone away from SROs, they were seeing more of a return to the SRO model. So um it, that was just, he wasn't specific on which ones, all he said um was that he had been looking at the different models. Across across the state and that schools were kind of more returning to that more traditional SRO model um than they had in the past.
Okay, across the state or um in in our area, in our region?
Yeah, I don't, he didn't say specifically in our region, it sounded more like across state, they had been looking at different models, so.
Okay, awesome, alright, um so yeah, that was obviously my question and uh want to follow through, but I. I do uh echo uh Board Member Lofthouse and the resources. You know, it's uh, you know, obviously, school resource officer, they should be out providing resources to our families, probably working. Uh closer with our community schools. Yeah, other than that, I mean, you know, business as usual, we're gonna keep it moving with our SROs. I I support this right now, um but let's see what's happening in our neighboring districts. And, you know, obviously, uh this weekend, I'll be meeting with quite a few delegates. Uh across the state and I I kinda wanna get their input on what they're doing uh with their SRO, so.
I have a quick question, sorry, if you're all done.
Yeah.
Um when it comes to hiring specific um SROs for the school sites. Do we have a part in who becomes those SROs? Like, do we sit on that interview panel?
Absolutely do, that's new, I mean, that's something we didn't do in the past, that was part of the the feedback from the safety committee and the board. That we wanna be part of the selection of the SROs.
Okay, and then who is, who, who specifically? Are there site members?
Is the one who's our liaison.
Okay.
So he actually, uh DT works a- as a staff member of ours, you guys know DT. And uh DT used to be a law enforcement officer himself, so he's a very good liaison to.
Um, sorry, do we have any school site members that, so school sites that they would be serving? Are there any, is there any representation? Okay.
That's something we could, we could definitely bring up next time there's a position open.
I think it would be really beneficial, I think um I had a conversation with someone about how valuable. Someone who they were working with was and what a res- what a, what a difference in the resources that were being provided, even just as an interim. And um and coming from an AP, how valuable that information is in terms of. Ensuring that their school sites get what they need in a school resource officer, so um I would definitely advocate when there are openings. Um or even kind of solidifying who will be at in certain sites, I think that that is something that. Is potentially lacking if that's not current practice.
I agree with Board Member Lofthouse, I think that's uh, I I didn't realize that it was just uh DT that was on the interview committee. And I'm sure DT's doing a great job, but I agree uh with Kara that. Uh you know, having the principal or vice principal um from the respective cities, a representative from. The high schools in the respective cities, wouldn't be a bad idea to have uh on the interview committee going forward. Um but certainly that doesn't need to hold up this this agreement, but I think that's something for your, maybe the notes. For the next version, to have something like that incorporated.
I'd like to add on to that and go further and say, can we have students in this conversation? I mean, I myself am very critical of SROs on campus, especially armed SROs on ca- on campus. And I would really like a student advocate in that room when the SRO is being picked. Um maybe a student color, a student who has experienced discrimination from a police officer or knows someone or is the. Son or daughter of someone who has, um that's really my my issue with SROs at all. Like, as a whole, is just the the systemic, like, the organization that is police in America. And it's hard seeing, you know, all this stuff happen across America, it's not necessarily in California, but you know, in the south, uh in the east coast. All this violence against, this systemic violence against people of color in America, it's it's hard seeing this. And I mean, it's happened historically, it's it's happening right now, there's still stories about it, it's hard seeing this on like social media or on the news. And then going and voting yes on something like this. So I think moving forward, if we were going to maybe add a third SRO or. Um look at other options like having um an SRO with non-lethal, uh you know, deterrents on campus. I think we should have a student in those conversations, I think that would be really beneficial.
Are you, are you saying still the dress down without?
I think, I think, well, my opinion is that we shouldn't have SROs at all. Um I I think that this money could be better spent in the actual schools with the admin, maybe counselors. Uh train counselors or hire other people, again, who aren't affiliated with police as a whole. Um but if we are moving in this direction and it's something that the board wants and something the community wants. I think a dress down with no gun on campus is the best option. Because, you know, I've been taught in my uh in my global politics class, actually, my my teacher, my global politics teacher, he really emphasizes part is. That police have a monopoly on violence, where they, you know, they are the ones, they are sanctioned by the government, by the state. To use violence, you know, in order to keep peace or whatever. But in a school setting, I just don't like guns at all, even if it's by the good guys, you know, because it's it's all subjective, so. I really don't like lethal weapons on campus at all, uh even if they've never been used ever, ever in a campus. I don't, I don't like the lethal weapons part, so if we were gonna have SROs on campus, I would rather it be. I mean, maybe they don't have to dress down, but ha- not not have the gun, not have a gun on them, that's that's my opinion.
And I I totally agree with you on that. Yeah, and I mean, we're doing so much as far as improving safety, especially with the fencing and. The enhanced security cameras and everything, I mean, I'm just wondering, you know. The way that the cost is going up with these SROs, I mean, like I said, it went up like thirty-nine thousand dollars. You know, if you're looking into future years, how how much is that cost gonna be and how much of, you know, the district is gonna have to spend on that? And like Van said, and I've said it years ago, and when I did say it, folks said, oh, well, you just don't like them, no, it's not that. It's just that, yeah, we can use it for other programming, for counseling. You know, so. Let's see where it goes, I mean, my initial thought when we were doing this with the safety committee. Maybe I was wrong, that we were working on a model or formula to do what our neighboring districts were doing. Just kind of getting away from the whole SRO, you know, concept, especially when they're on campus. And the one thing that bothered me, and I and I know it happened this year, Cordova, when I went there, I mean. It's cool if they're on campus and doing their thing, but when you have a police car. You know, almost on the quad, and I I know it's happened a couple of times, that bothers me. But, you know, uh I'm just one school board member and obviously I can ask around and say, why is this happening? I mean, they could park outside, you know, it could also serve as a deterrent uh for folks thinking about doing something, yeah, police cars outside. But when it's inside in a fenced area, I have an issue with that. So anyway, uh I, any other questions from the board, comments, before I take it out to public?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, how many of the SROs go to the, I think we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, the safety advisory committee meetings?
I actually didn't attend the last one, but the one before that, we had SROs at, I'm pretty sure, Jen, were you at the last meeting?
Yes, uh we, yeah, SROs were there, um they're they're attending very consistently. Um and going back to our first meeting of the year, um it was an overwhelming. Will of the group to keep the SROs specifically from staff members that really felt that they really needed to have the SROs on there. So that's really where the conversation turned um uh to be solidly behind the SRO program. Um so that's kind of, that's kind of where it was at, um every meeting that we we talked about it, it was a a consistent theme. That we wanted to have the SROs there and even the themes in the meeting was um and and from the SROs, the SROs were asking to go to the trainings. They wanted to go to the training, so um they were actually, I think, the SROs themselves were very happy with this particular contract that we made the uh change to shall. Um because they uh didn't attend the last time, not because they didn't wanna go, but because of of coverage. Um and so now this is going to require for that coverage to be able to be there while they're gone, so.
Okay.
I think for me, every time this comes up, it's the same conversation of accountability and um. Ensuring that they are providing the schools with something that we can't get from the local police departments and so. Um and I was one hundred percent van, like, up until this past week and having some conversations with. With administrators that were working directly with them, um and what they can provide. However, up to this point, and I was a stickler on like wanting to see reports and wanting to be specific. And and still wanting to have more specifics, um while I think playing basketball is great. There's more resources that they can be providing our students and um while that might be part of it. That's such a small part that um that I, I I'm still wanting to see more. Um and at this price point, we have to have them be providing more to our schools and. And there has to be a return on investment, like, this is a huge investment that our district is making on four individuals. And on those four individuals, they should be making such an impact that every student knows every single one of their names. And that they have a personal connection with them and um just like we expect of our teachers to have with their class. Their students and the principals to have with the students at their schools. Um and and that's the level that I would expect at at this investment. Um and I feel like, I feel like we shouldn't be a broken record, because I feel like we're fighting against a different organization. To get something that we've been asking for over and over and over and over again and s- and still not receiving that. The very first conversation I've had with an AP that was like, yes, we need this, was somebody filling in. And um and so I think that that after that conversation with her. It was, it was like, yes, this is what they need to be providing, this is what I wanna see on the report every single week. That that our SROs are doing and we don't see that. And so it's, it's so hard for me, like, yes, I think that we do need something. Um and I think that what we've been asking for as a district, as a board, is always faced with this resistance of. They're employed by the by the police department, we we have certain rules because they're employed by the police department. Well, we're, we're helping pay for them, so I feel like we need to have more of a say of what they're doing. And having some direction and and that's probably on us too, of giving like very clear direction of like, this is what we expect. Um but we also then can get that return of like, mm, sorry, no, it's not, that's not what we do. And so that level of accountability of if we want these SROs to be doing certain things. Can they just say no because, sorry, we're employed by the police department, um when we're paying for half of it? So it's just, I feel like it's the same conversation over and over again and honestly, I'm tired of having the same conversation. Because it it should be, they should be providing more of a resource at this point. Um because it's been a conversation every year since I've been on this board and I know it was every year prior to that. Um so it's just, it's frustrating, it's frustrating every week when I, every two weeks when I get the. So it's just, it's frustrating. It's frustrating every week when I, every two weeks when I get the um, report and. It's, I, it's better, but. It needs to be more, um, and and by more, I don't mean more violence or more any of that. I'm, I mean more of a resource, like what are we providing our students for this cost?
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, if there are no other comments, I will uh, take it out to the public and we do have. Public comment on this, uh, Mr. Earl Smith.
Good evening, board, Mr. President, Mr. Swanson. What are you paying for? Why, why a third resource officer? Why does Folsoms Cordova School District need it? One image I have from high school is I watched a Mexican boy stab another Mexican boy in the head with a knife, with the screwdriver. Teachers running by saying, no! That stuff happening? Yes, the vaping is an issue. But already with the police being on campus, it's not stopping because the issue is not the police officer and just as JT said. They cannot discipline. But our Mr. Caden had used the resource officer to sit right next to him while he pulled students in his office about Williams throwing that drumstick. I saw it in the text message. I thought I sent it to you guys, but I'm gonna resend that. According to JT, what he said over this pulpit is that shouldn't have happened. Give the money to the teachers. Didn't you say that? Didn't you say that? The teachers need more. Let's say Prince Williams is stressed out, all this stuff's going on and I know, I know Mr. Gazer didn't do a great job of training her. And she had a question, she threw her drumstick. Maybe she needed more resource. But what is the point of the police in a city of Folsom that has a low crime rate? Be on campus in the first place. It's not what? I still have the questions when I met with Dr. Ogden. How my personal, not public. Facebook comments was on a printout of on his desk. He said someone else gave it, but I'm not so sure. That he may have had a connection with the police and they went and pulled out, had that resource and pulled out, when that didn't even say anything. So yes, you're asking the same questions. I see that. It's a repeat of the same conversation. And it also felt like in the beginning of the conversation, a support of adding a third one. The money's being wasted. To get what you're asking for accountability, you got to bring in some of your own. Train them and for them to do what it is you want to do. There is a lot of retired police officers that are willing to even volunteer. It's ridiculous. This is just not the district to have police roaming around. We just don't have the crime in the city. I don't, I can't speak for Rancho Cordova. I can't, cause I don't know the city well enough, but I know Folsom well enough and the crime coming is from the skinheads. But I just don't see it happening. And it's a breakdown of administration where you have these type of vaping and and these other. Really small petty things going on. You need the 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 administrator, the principal, the assistant principal, they need to do a better job.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. Faith Smith, for the record, uh, she is a student, please allow four minutes.
First question I want to ask is why? Why I have an SRO? Then I want to point out that you're calling them SROs, but it says on there. Approve annual source resource, school resource officer agreement between FCUSD. And the City of Folsom Police Department and Sacramento County Sheriff's Office. It's the police. I mean, seriously, it's just the police. It's not an SRO really, it's a police officer. So I know a lot of you are aware of that, but I mean, think about it, it's not. You're having a police officer come on campus with a gun, as Board Member Merrill said. I mean, I think that they shouldn't have a gun, but also. There's been many videos of them just beating them with a stick. So it's not just the gun that's bad. You'll have, you can have a student still beat with a stick and you won't know. But then I also want to bring up the point that I've already told you about Ms. Williams throwing a drumstick at a student. I witnessed it happen. And I've also been told of many times where that happened before, when it was Mr. Gazer, throwing chairs at students. You guys can't control that, so how are you gonna control a police officer? I mean, this teacher is already employed by you guys, but then you can't control them from abusing a student? So how do you know that the police officer is not gonna abuse the student too? And not only that, this teacher is still employed, so are you gonna keep the police officer too after they do something like that? I mean, that's a real question to ask. What are you gonna do if that does happen? Are you gonna take them out or are you gonna keep them and say, oh, it was a mistake? Oh, they were just being funny, it was a joke? Or the students found it funny? It's, it's not, um, necessary. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That is our public comments in person, any online? All right, thank you. Bring it back to the board for discussion and or more uh, motion?
I'll move.
All right, um, actually, I I did have a final comment. I don't think we're gonna go to three. Because. Our money could be spent elsewhere and I've said this before and I've said it again. You know, it, and I don't know if the cities will say, oh, yeah, we'll we'll spring for a third one. I mean, if they do, that's another discussion. The reports that we get, can they be better? Absolutely. And I'm on board with Ms. Lofthouse about. You know, we'd like to see what resources they're providing. We'd like to see that written down in the in the reports. I wish the conversation would continue to happen about our officers dressing down on campus. It's great that they're coming in and they're hanging out with the kids and everything, but it is really intimidated for. Our, our students of color uh, to come up and see a a fully armored police officer. I mean, it would scare me. You know, and. I've said this before, I have family members who are police officers. And we've had talks about that. School resource officers, I I was trying to think of this analogy that, um, you know, if your house is getting broken into. And a police officer, I mean, you call the police, yeah, they show up, right? Or if you feel threatened. And I think it's the same way, it's their civic duty, even, you know, if something was happening at school. You you call the police officer, they gotta show up anyway. You know, but we're still paying. Now, if they're providing resources, if they're helping out. And I'm hoping that that's what they'll do and and we as a district obviously can review their contract and say, hey, this ain't working. Let's, you know, uh, rethink this thing. And I'm hoping maybe that's something that we'll do, uh, moving forward is to maybe, uh, six months in. Come back and review this and maybe see how the reports are going, uh, seeing what kind of resources they're providing. And then maybe put the onus on the district to make that decision on whether we keep them. Or whether we look at other options as what other school districts are doing. Now, I, I don't know if if other districts are going back to the SRO model. I'm one of those that like to question things and luckily for Board Member Lofthouse and I, we. Are attending the delegates assembly this weekend, so it's gonna be a question. Cause I'm definitely gonna ask it. What are we doing? Are you guys going back to SROs? And think about the cost. You know, uh, many districts are are in a deficit. You know, and we're, we're spending money on safety and I already mentioned it before, we. You know, we're enhancing our safety at at our schools, we're putting fencing up. I I think last I heard that we were putting fencing up at Mitchell. With enhanced cameras. Even at our elementary schools, Cordova Gardens. With cameras and fencing. You know, we're keeping our kids safe. I'm, I wanna go with this right now, but I would really hope that maybe within six months, the district revisits. And find out, okay, are we getting a return on investment? That'd be a question to ask six months from now. So with that being said, I will, uh, if there's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I have one last one. So. I I, I'm gonna process this because I will be voting yes tonight and it was one hundred percent based on. Circumstances from this past week, one hundred percent. Had it been last week that this meeting happened, I would have voted no on this. I think that um, our district is paying a lot of money and not receiving a lot of value. And I think that where we maybe go wrong and in six months is the conversation of who these individuals are. And what are they providing and what value are they bringing? And if they are not the right individual, that's where we look at. Changes that can happen because this contract isn't contracted with specific people, it's contracted with the police department. And so I think that this is a role that. I would say not very many police officers can do and can do well because this isn't what they went into. Do as a profession typically, there are very few, but um, I think that. That this role is not something that people train to do when they go into the police department or. Think like, you know, I'm gonna be a s- a school resource officer. Um, and put their time and effort and energy into being that as a, as a person. Because it it takes a special person to be able to do both of those, these roles. And so I think that while this contract is specifically with the, with the police department and the sheriff. Office, we need to look at the specific individuals that are, that are providing these services for the schools and. Really determine and and this is where our our school sites are going to be very valuable in. Like what are they actually receiving um, from these officers and do the, do we think that there's somebody better out there? And what, what do the schools need and find people that can provide those things? So um, because this contract is not with individual people, because I think that we could potentially find the right people to do this job. It's with the departments and then I am very much um, in support of continuing the conversation of. Of how our officers appear and where they park and and the demeanor they have. Pulling up in the middle of the quad is inappropriate. We wouldn't be allowed to do that. Superintendent wouldn't be allowed to do that. And so um, I think that that having some management of those types of behaviors, those are like low hanging fruit. That we can kind of take care of right away, but again. I'm reluctantly voting yes, simply because of this week's past um, circumstances. And so with that, I think that we need to ensure that the right individuals and. And our district needs to be who determines that over the police department determining who provides that. I think that um, we need to have a bigger say in that, so.
I think the, um, kind of adding on to that, I think the topic of SROs is a very. What people say like a double edged sword because there's very, there's good and there's bad from SROs and sometimes. SROs, they have, SROs and police have very negative connotations and being a person of color and seeing everything that happens in. America and on the media and all of that, you um, you see that and you, there are. As we talked about, there's probably better ways to address the situation and the things that they are supposed to address. Like counseling and other practices and like maybe putting that money into teachers and. But I think that with this contract and from everything that Dr. Ogden presented. I would probably vote yes, just because of what Ms. Lofthouse said. Because if we can take six months to see what this can bring and see how this works and just. Not make it, maybe have, I wish we talked about it a little more, but. I think that just seeing where this takes us and I think what I'm hearing from the majority of. And my personal opinion as well, is that the school resource officers right now, they just kind of have a presence at the school. They're not really engaging with the kids. I think that's, they're just there and hopefully with better training and everything that was discussed. At the safety advisory committee that they can be more engaging and if they've been coming to the meetings, they've been. And they want to participate in more um, leadership trainings and more, not leadership train, but more, just trainings in general. If that, if this addresses all of that and this has been talked about and um, this has been, they've. They've just chosen this or they've discussed this, I think, seeing how this works out for six months. I, that's why I would vote yes, just because if they can create, if this can bring more engagement from them, rather than a presence. I think that would be more beneficial, just seeing how these next six months turn out and.
Well, one thing I just want to point out, uh, uh, it was in twenty. Twenty one, where we directed the SROs to be less engaging with the students. This board asked the SROs, please do not engage with the students. So I have no problem with the SROs engaging with the students, I just want to just correct the record and say. It's this board that changing its mind. If we want the SROs to be more engaging with the students, that's great. But the reason why they are not engaging with the students is because we asked them not to. That's all I wanted to correct. But yeah, I I think, but looking at the reports that we, we get uh, biweekly or. You know, before every board meeting, we are showing that. They are engaging with kids. You know, playing basketball and everything else like that. I think if it was an issue, we would have said, why are they playing basketball with the kids? And I'm quite honestly, maybe it's my old age, I don't know, and I, I don't recall saying that there was, we wanted less interaction. Of course, I mean, that's the role of the SROs to interact with their kids, but you know. Interact the right way. You know, and and not like, cause I remember. The one kid that was talking, he says, yeah, I was talking to SRO and the whole time he. Had his hand on his gun and it was like, you know, and it was a kid of color and it's like, okay, um, he said, but that was really intimidating for him. So, you know, if we're looking at them interacting with their kids, great. But again, it's all about that middle word, resource. You know, if there's kids facing trauma or having issues, what resources are they providing? And it's not like they're counselors, because we know they're not, right? But um, I'd like to see them provide more resources. And maybe. You know, again, not park on campus. I'm gonna go along with Ms. Lofthouse with that reluctant yes. But I want the caveat of us, you know, revisiting this in six months. Just to see where we are, um, and then give some feedback from other districts and find out, you know, if they have. SROs or if they're going back to doing SROs. I mean, I can't imagine the way that school budgets are right now. That they would be paying money, not unless the city or uh, the county is paying the full share, so. Uh, just something to think about, but are there any other comments before I entertain a motion?
I think.
Yeah, I I'd like to make one comment. I I think that some of this is too, is we have maybe a juxtaposition too, a little bit between uh, the two different. Between Folsom PD and the sheriffs. Because if you're talking about Rancho students specifically, and maybe it's just because I'm a little bit more educated on that. There's a lot of things that they're doing and I think that some of it is, is that, and I've been talking to Mr. Martin about this, is like really making sure that we're working on those reports. Because we're getting reports back of the officers, you know, uh, working with community schools and finding out that there's kids who don't have transportation. And those officers are providing the bikes so that the student can get to the, to get, can get to. to get it can get to school. Um, another student who pulled up driving a car that they knew didn't have a license, um, spoke to the, the officer spoke to the student, you know, hey, we got a report that you were driving without a license. Hey, I didn't have the money to 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 go and get the license. The officer gives her the the money to go get her license so that she can drive legally, you know? So I think those are happening. I think it just isn't necessarily reflected in the reports. And so I think that some of the issue that we have is really working on those reports. And I think that we need a better, I don't know if it's like an infograph or what it is that we need specifically, but I think that we need to really, really dig in on that issue um, and really get those reports straightened up even a little bit better than what they are. Because if you're talking to the administrators and I think what Ms. Loft House is speaking to is that there is things that are happening, it just isn't necessarily coming back up to the board. And that's where I think we're finding some of the biggest disconnect is I think that the work's actually happening, it's but it's hard for us to see it because we're not boots on the ground on the campus every single day. So we've gotta get that issue like fixed kind of once and for all and we've been kind of like trying to dig into this. And I'm not sure how we can like address this further, but you know, I think that we've gotta go back and say like, this still has to be better. Like if the reports are improved, but they still need to be better because we are getting reports from the community and we're seeing it out in the community, but some of those things that we're seeing in the community are still not even reflected in the reports. So I think that there is a disconnect between the work and the reporting as well. That we've gotta really kind of get resolved uh, in order for us to be able to really solidly feel comfortable with the model that we have.
Okay.
So maybe because this contract is for a year, I just kind of wanted to put that out. What we are voting for is for an entire year, not six months. So maybe it would be possible to have the actual SROs come and do a presentation in six months. And and kind of showcase what they do do so that we can have a deeper conversation and we can ask questions just like we do of any of our other staff of what are they doing? What are they providing and and give them an opportunity to to showcase what they do. Because I think that would be valuable not only to the board, but to to the public as well. But I think that that would be a way for us to have a real conversation before the couple of weeks that we have to like figure out the contract and do all of that. I think that this needs to be an ongoing conversation. It needs to be sort of an ongoing relationship that like we're and times are gonna change, like every, nothing is gonna be solid of like, this is what's going to happen right now because things happen and things change and the needs are gonna change and so the expectation won't always be exactly the same. And so I think that, and the board will change and what what the board wants and what what the sites want and need um, will change. So I think that maybe, maybe we look at in six months, there's a presentation by the school resource officers. To showcase what they're doing. And I think that that would be a good way for us to kind of review it. We've, we'll have seen their reports and maybe we can figure out some way to uh, to showcase what they are doing better um, still than the reports and and kind of go from there, but I don't think, I mean, we don't have much of a relationship with them as board members. We see them, we say hi. But.
I think that's a great idea. Um, and and I do, I do think that too, you know, I mean, our expectation is we want the best of the best to be with our students too. So and really continue to push in on that with them um, as an agency.
I like the idea too.
Right. Uh, with that, I will, uh, if there are no other comments, I will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll move.
Uh, moved by Mr. Reed.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Larrett, uh, Superintendent.
Ms. George.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
No.
Mr. Charlamagne.
Aye.
Ms. Larrett.
Aye.
Ms. Loft House.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Right, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to item B, approved certificate assignments under provisional internship permit for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
Yeah, just in case, cause you're on both units. It's a routine item.
It's pretty routine.
Yeah, but just in case.
Yeah.
It's discussion action.
Okay, these are routine items. The next two, uh, this first one allows the district to provide a credential. It's called a um, provisional internship permit or a PIP is what we call it. In order to do this, uh, two things need to happen. The person that we issue this credential to needs to be taking classes towards uh, that degree or that credential. Secondly, they have to say that we consent to this assignment. They can't, they they can't do this against their will. So they have to agree to uh, to do this assignment. We have one person uh, who we are going to be issuing a a PIP permit to and uh, his name's here. He's a special ed teacher, mild-mot at Folsom High School.
All right, any question from the board? Like I said, it's a pretty routine item. Any public comment? No. Any online? No. Back to the board. Uh, any comments? I'll entertain a motion if not.
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Reed.
I'll second.
Uh, seconded by Board Member Loft House, Superintendent.
Ms. George.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Charlamagne.
Aye.
Ms. Larrett.
Aye.
Ms. Loft House.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, and don't move. Uh, item C, approved certificate assignments under a variable term waiver for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
So uh, this is a another permit basically that the uh, the district or a credential the district can issue. That it's, it's called a variable term waiver. And basically what it allows you to do is uh, we, when you have a fully credentialed teacher and they're teaching in a subject area, for example, computer science or health science, medical technology, um, they can actually get a waiver because they're on the way to completing their credential in that specific discipline. And uh, they are fully credentialed otherwise, but they're just adding on. So for example, I have a a credential, that's a multiple subject credential. I have another credential, that's an add-on, that's a math credential. So if you take the, if you have enough units and you're working towards that second credential, you're allowed to uh, waive it for a year while they work on it. And at the end of the year, hopefully they have all their stuff done and we don't have to bring this back next year. But we typically, you know, with a thousand teachers, we typically do uh, these every year.
All right, any questions, comments from the board? There's none uh, in-person comments, any online, back to the board, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Moved by Board Member Loft House.
I'll second.
Seconded by Student Board Member George, Superintendent.
Ms. George.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Charlamagne.
Aye.
Ms. Larrett.
Aye.
Ms. Loft House.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Right. And let's see, where are we at? We're item twelve. Uh, update after the uh, Series A bond sales for school facilities improvement district, FSID for measures R and S.
Just an information item, that's all.
Yep.
Included there. It's regarding the bond sales, just to comply with the education code. Do you have the attached summary?
Yep, absolutely. Uh, any comments from the board on that? Any questions?
I'm excited.
I'm very excited as well. It is an information item, so if there's nothing on it, we'll go on to item thirteen, Superintendent's Report.
Yes, so, thank you, President Clark. We, so for my Superintendent's Report today, we're gonna watch a video. It's just over five minutes. Uh, earlier this year, this board uh, oh, almost, not quite yet, approved us to do a comprehensive facilities master plan. And uh, part of the work that's been happening from that firm is they've created a video for us. So the video is really concentrating on our, um, what a comprehensive facilities master plan does, but why I wanna share it with tonight, cause we're gonna watch it multiple times probably over the next year. There's a thing in in literacy instruction called close reading. And when you read something, uh, when you're close reading something, you read it more than one time. And you read it differently for different intentions. So today I want you to close watch. And all I want you to watch this video for, you can, you can get all the stuff around the facilities and all that, but just watch our two student board members that are at this dais steal the show and talk about their experience before they walk across the stage in a couple of weeks of being a student in Folsom Cordova Unified. So that's what I want you to watch this five minutes for. I thought today was a fitting opportunity in celebrating them to watch this video, so.
Well, I've been going to Folsom Cordova Unified School District since kindergarten. I've been in Folsom, Ming Ranch, this area for my entire life.
And I think this district really teaches you how to get ready for the real world.
Hi, my name is Mia George and I go to Folsom High School.
My name is Van Merrill, uh, and I go to Cordova High School.
I really saw how different FCUSD was compared to all the other districts.
We were one of few districts who had uh, two student board members instead of one. We were also one of few districts that have two distinct cities within it into one cohesive um, district.
Even two very diverse communities can come together at the end of the day and support each other, just be whole. I think the students are also very well connected. Everyone in, I know both cities are very into participating within their communities.
I love this community, Rancho Cordova and Folsom. The reputation of this district precedes itself. It is an amazing place to work. You get such an incredible opportunity to be surrounded by diversity. So it really makes for an amazing full life opportunity when you live out here with the great schools that are gonna care for your kids each and every day, as well as the great opportunities to live and grow your family and connect with friends in your community. Our first school was constructed and opened in nineteen oh eight and the Granite School is still standing and still serving the community. We officially became a unified school district in nineteen forty-nine. Our district has been growing ever since. We're at about twenty-two thousand five hundred kids right now with our projections hitting over thirty thousand over the next decade or so. The last time we did a comprehensive district facility plan was over a decade ago. That has guided our work and created a north star for the development. But as we head into the future with this additional growth that over a decade ago we couldn't predict, we definitely need to establish a new north star to guide our decisions. I think first addresses the current facilities that we have.
For example, Cordova High is over sixty years old now. Sixty years old, you know, it takes a toll on the campus. When we're renovating and we're modernizing our campuses, it's important to think of like what impact this has on the student. When you have a facility that's a very well-loved facility, that's small like our library, it puts a dampener on like a student's mindset and their perspective of the campus.
The comprehensive facility plan will help us know when we need to improve so that our students always have a safe and clean and healthy place to attend, as well as when is the right time for us to be building new schools to address the ever-changing demographics. And one of the things that's really important for the leadership is to make sure that we're really great stewards of public funds. We know that our facilities are gonna be standing beyond my tenure, beyond a lot of the people working in the district's tenure. In making proper investments to make sure that those are the right ones is the core of our work and we can't do that without a comprehensive facility plan to make those decisions that are long lasting.
When you have these modernized facilities, it gives the student a mindset of, yeah, my school can do this, we're all that. It really boosts the school pride and it it makes you wanna be, I mean, in my case, it makes you wanna be a Lancer. That's what you stand for.
I had a sense of pride that my school has this, like, oh, you guys need to see this. It just helps the kids like so much and they want to do stuff with that. It drives the student to want to do more and I just think that the return on investment is much greater than what was put into the building.
So we have to create spaces for our students in a way that allows for innovation because we actually don't know what the jobs of tomorrow are gonna be because five, ten years from now, what's happening in the classroom may be different than it is today.
It's fostering this new generation of technology. You want your high school campus to look like it's preparing you for the future. So you can go on to college, you can go on to vocational school and be the future.
It's just so cool to see such passionate and dedicated people. All of the teachers and all of the staff on my campus are connected in trying to push the next generation forward and for the better.
My kindergarten teacher taught my mom. My fifth grade teacher also taught my mom. I've been to both sides of the district. I've been a resident of both cities. I can definitely understand that commitment to the community. I came to the conclusion that I would only wanna be a teacher if it was at Cordova High School. I would wanna show that same commitment for my high school and my alumni as my teachers have. It's that commitment that, that Folsom Cordova feeling you get, you know, it's, it's a feeling.
Thank you, Van. Thank you, Mia. That concludes my comment for today.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, that was um, amazing. How come we didn't enter that into the proposal?
Listen, I said we're gonna watch it a lot.
Let me tell you, that AEC conference, man, we could've.
We're gonna win a lot of golden bells, sir. We're gonna little, win a lot of.
All right, all right. All right, so um, Board Member Reports. Uh, Student Board Member George.
So that was a great video and we met the, the two people that filmed it, I think were from San Diego. And so they were super cool to me and that's, yeah, thank you for including us in that um, thing. And then the next thank you that I wanted to give out was to my AP Gov class who came for their civic engagement project. And I apologize to anyone that thought that I didn't shout them out before, cause I spoke before, but I am shouting them out right now and I will ask Mr. Castro to play this video and thank you for coming and thank you for Will and um, I know you're not in my period. I don't know if you're in AP Gov either, but thank you for staying till the very end. And um, I know it was, it wasn't too long of a meeting, but it was super cool seeing them here and hopefully they all learned about the school board and in the future that they have resources like this to be civically engaged participants in their future communities. And that's my thank you. And then I also wanted to thank Mr. Kamine for being my teacher, who he teaches me AP research and he teaches AP physics too. And thank you for being here. Thank you for staying the whole time. And thank you, Ms. Heine, for staying the whole time as well, so. Those are my thank yous. And then for my, for what's happening at school, prom happened last week. Our Disney trip is happening next week on, yeah, Friday, Saturday. I won't be going cause I did not sign up, but I hope everyone has a great time there and cause me and Van went in December, so that kind of factored into that decision. And then we're, we'll be going into finals and then our elementary school grad walks are gonna be coming up soon. I believe mine is on the twenty-second, but I think some schools, they're doing it by different elementary schools. And then our send-off rally is next Friday and then yeah, that's all I have for my report. And thank you for the awards. Thank you for all the cookies. And I know this isn't my last meeting, but thank you for all the thank yous that you gave us. And so, yeah. I will be, I'll say more thank yous next week or the weekend.
Well, that was a great video that I, I just saw that. Yeah, I I'm gonna be, I'm definitely gonna be showing that to all my friends, cause I mean, I was like one of the three spotlights of that. That was great. A little recap of what happened the past month. It's been a very busy month, you know, it's May, I'm a senior. Lots of things happening. Uh, we had senior awards night on May first, which is why I couldn't come to the May first meeting. I thought I was gonna be able to make it, but it was just so short and I just missed it. So it was like, it was right as I got out was that meeting ended, so. But it was great seeing all my uh, friends that I've spent so long with, you know, receive recognition of their achievements through scholarships, you know, a lot of my friends receive scholarships. And I think it's great because a lot of my friends, you know, have worries about paying for college. And just seeing that, like, even though obviously it's not a a full year's tuition, seeing that thousand, that two thousand dollars, it's really motivating. It's really like, it it boosts your sense of worth, you know? And I really, I really enjoy that. Uh, I enjoyed going there. I'm not, not to diss this meeting or the last week's meeting or anything, but I really enjoyed going to the senior awards night. And I'd like to thank all of the, you know, all of the organizations giving out the scholarships. I mean, they're really helping students at Cordova High. I mean, they're helping me. I mean, I have, what this, I I count this as a job. I have this job, I have another job. And I mean, the the money that I received was two thousand, I received two scholarships. It's really motivating to, you know, be like, man, I really might be able to pay for college. I won't graduate in debt and whatever. And it's the same for a lot of students. And I'm, I'm just really glad that Cordova has that senior awards night where everyone can get together. And I'm, I'm just really glad that Cordova has that senior awards night where everyone can get together. You know, the, the grapevine was there, taking pictures, everyone was going to the newspaper. It's a really fun time, it's a really fun time. We also had senior ball at the Galleria Library down in Sacramento. It was very fun. I'd like to thank student government, Cordova Student Government and admin for running it and then setting it up and tearing it down and stuff. It was a very fun night. And I actually really liked the venue and the area, even though, you know, I'm from Sac. It's like, oh, I'm just going to Sacramento. It was, it was a great time, it was a great time. We had, I had our grad walk, was that yesterday? Was it yesterday or was it Tuesday? Yesterday, yeah. We had a grad walk yesterday where we visited Cordova Villa. We visited Mitchell Middle School, Williamson Elementary, Mills Middle School, and then we ended off at Cordova. It was really fun seeing all the students. One of the Mitchell students had a sign with my name on it and I, I gave him a little fist bump. He was, he was very excited because I pointed at him from the crowd, I was like, that's me, that's me. But yeah, it's really, it's really great seeing all the kids, you know, be really excited and clapping and cheering for us. Because I remember in, I think I've only been a part of one grad walk when I was, when I was a kid on elementary school. And it was at Blanch Sprints. I was in like, no, it was at Folsom Middle School, the sixth grade. I don't remember what year it was. But I remember being that kid and I seen the people walk through, I was like, man, this is crazy. There's, I'm going to be this guy one day. And I mean, there I was, I was that guy one day. I was in a different, obviously I was in a different color robe, so I wasn't in dark blue Vista, I was in bright red Lancer. But what else, what else? Tomorrow, we have our senior send off rally at 1:00 PM. It's, you know, our last rally of the year. And it's the whole tradition where they throw paint, it's not paint, it's dye, red dye in the air. And then I have to go to sixth and seventh period covered in red dye because, you know, I'm becoming, I'm graduating. It's a great tradition that Cordova has. And yeah, this, this is the last meeting of school year. I'll be here next meeting, which is June 5th. So I'll save all my goodbyes for then. But I'd also like to thank all of you for your kindness, your appreciation, all your thank yous. Today, it really means a lot, but I'll save all the tears for next, next meeting.
All right, thank you, sir. Board Member Charlamagne.
You know, next two weeks is going to be exams weeks, right? Good luck to students for exams and parents. More stressful for you, I know that much. But, you know, be well, thank you.
All right, Board Member Reed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to take this time to read part of an email that a teacher sent the board today. I will only be reading one third of the email. I really would like to read the whole email, but it's a very long email. So I'm just reading one part that resonated with me. Well, it all, all of it resonated with me. I'm not disclosing the name of the teacher, other than to say the teacher is a middle school honors teacher. And I've changed two words in what I'm about to read to preserve that anonymity. Because I did not get, I didn't ask permission to, to read it. So I, I don't know if that teacher would want me to or not. But anyway. It's, reads, "I wanted to explain one big error in the district's presentation. IM1 is not equivalent to algebra. IM2 is not geometry. IM1 is integrated math. It combines concepts of algebra and geometry, the first half of each course. And teaches them in a way that the algebraic and geometric concepts are integrated. It also introduces statistics. IM2 combines more advanced algebra and geometry, still integrated in basics of probability. The new plan. Sutter and Folsom Middle School teachers were invited to the presentation of the new plan. There was no discussion beforehand. During the meeting, they presented a plan with one honors class in seventh grade. One of the teachers said something like, quote unquote, "We could just have the regular courses and have kids move through those," end quote. The next day, we received the new plan. This is how they attributed it to one of the teachers. All of us had concerns and shared them. It was never unanimous. They gave us, they gave multiple reasons for the need for a new plan. One, California framework wants rigor. Not once did anyone visit a Sutter classroom to determine if our classes had rigor. Two, too much pressure. The pressure is not on the gifted students. It is on students that are not prepared for middle school. When the high school complains students don't know their multiplication facts. That is on the elementary schools, which might still be teaching common core methods that have crippled students and parents alike. Three, students not successful in high school. It is not the honors students who are struggling. Students that weren't placed correctly in middle school and not allowed to move down are another issue. We are working with our counselors to prepare a plan for next year. One of the board members, one of the board mentioned that IM3 is the make or break class. I have interviewed quite a few of my former IM1 students who earned as in IM2. And found IM3 challenging but doable. Many of my IM2 students chose to skip IM3 and go straight to pre-calculus. So for the most part, it is not the kids that were advanced that are struggling in IM3. Four, advanced students not completing calculus at the high school level. I think they should have asked these students why. One student didn't take calculus because they told him it required six hours of homework on the weekends. He was doing two sports and earned his eagle during his junior year. As a senior, he made state for wrestling and went to district for swim. And he took AP Stats at Folsom Lake his senior year. He was last year's FHS Athlete of the Year, hardly a failure. Kids make choices that are the best for them. Especially these kids, a better search would have been what colleges they got into. Most of my IM2 kids have gone to UC schools. Recently, I had 10 plus former students at UC Berkeley. And I'll skip all the way to the end where the teacher writes. "I am very concerned about the planned courses for the 2025-26, but we continue to do our best. Please be open to readjusting after this trial run or before." So this email obviously concerns me for many reasons, but ultimately, it comes down to how did this middle school honors math change ever get this far? It wasn't done by the consensus of the math department or the math teachers. It wasn't done with the input of the elementary, middle and high school teachers. I still really haven't gotten a clear description of how did this ever get this far? It's not the first time, it's not the second time. It's the third time in the last six years that this has happened. There is clearly some attempt by someone or some people within the district who think that their approach is better than that which the teachers who teach the subjects know. I don't know what the solution is. But, but this has got to change. And I'm going to ask on the next item, which we're asking for future agenda items. That the board have a discussion about bringing the full honors middle school math. Has it's been successfully deployed for many years back and continue with, with that program? I would also just observe that we created a shortened day on Thursdays, a unified day. For all the teachers to be able to collaborate cross-grade levels. What's going on with that day? You would think that that would have been a perfect opportunity for the math teachers to collaborate. Between school sites, between grade levels, between schools. Why didn't that take place? We literally created a day each week for that to happen and it didn't happen. So I'm going to also be asking for a report with the consensus of my colleagues. To have a presentation on what exactly is happening on Thursdays. All right. And then as for the students, congratulations, especially to the seniors. Well, actually all the students, because it's always exciting at the end of a school year. I always look forward to summer and I'm sure that has not changed over the years. Seniors, a different type of excitement, right? And so I, I want to congratulate all the seniors regardless of what their future paths take them. I am sure they will be good and promising. And whether you're going to college, to a trade school, whether you're going into the military, going into the workforce. Whatever you're doing, I wish you the best. We wish you the best and thank you for being a part of FCUSD. That's my report for tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you. Board Member Larrett.
Yeah, not really much of a report for me. Just want to wish all the students good luck in these last couple of weeks. It's an exciting time, lots of field trips and end of the year trips and tests and everything. And we're just looking forward to being with you on your promotions and your graduations. And just good luck in the next couple of weeks. And that's it for me.
All right, Board Member Loft House.
I also don't have very much this evening, but congratulations again to Van and Mia. It truly has been a pleasure to work with you guys on the board. I will not be here in person next board meeting, so I'll give you guys big hugs before I leave. But, and then also looking very forward to graduation week. Us on the board have a very busy week between middle school and high school graduations. But it is probably my favorite part of this job. So I, I look forward to being out there. We've, I've seen all the weather, so winds, I don't know if there's been rain, but it's been cold, it's been super hot. So I'm hopeful for perfect weather and good luck on finals and have fun and be safe over the next couple of weeks.
All right, thank you. I just have a few things and I want to start off by thanking Madam Vice President for taking over the reins last board meeting and, and running the meeting. I did see little bits and pieces of it. I had limited internet access, but good job, thank you for that.
That's why we were out at 7:30.
But yeah, so, you know, this past Monday, I had the opportunity along with some of the leadership and Superintendent Swanson to attend the AXA Teachers Award Administrator of the Year Awards. So I want to congratulate Amy Strawn out at Cordova and Hunt Lynn here at the EFC for getting their awards. It's just great seeing that Folsom Cordova can be represented like that. And I know Van, you mentioned the scholarship night and I just want to take time to recognize and congratulate Nia Donella. Who was the winner of the Clark Family Memorial Scholarship that we gave, our family gave to her. So hopefully she puts it to good use. Other than that, you know, it's, I'm glad to be back. I, like I said, I wasn't at the last meeting, I, I just needed that break. I so look forward to the next two years. I'm going to finish out visiting schools. I kind of been lagging on that, but had the opportunity to visit a few schools in the past two weeks. I will conclude that next week and then I look forward to graduations coming up the week of the 26th, I think, 27th or something like that. So congratulations to all those students. Hopefully, one day we can, as board members, get to all of them, hint, hint. And I know that we're working on it, we're having discussions, we'll see where it goes. But I look forward to the graduations. But other than that, we, I'm, I'm done. We can move on to advanced planning, A, next board meeting. If the board has anything, Superintendent.
Next board meeting, June 5th.
Yes, sir. 12-month board calendar and suggested future board agenda items. Looking at that, let's see here. Yeah, I don't see anything.
We'll have a couple on June 5th. We have the Vaping Task Force and Safety Committee update coming to us and then a presentation on graduation credits.
All right, perfect, perfect, perfect. With that being said.
And, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd like to ask the board if we could have two additional items added to this. One, to reconsider reestablishing the middle school math honors program. In the format that it had previously operated very successfully. And then the second being a report on the Thursday professional development. And how that's going and exactly what is going on with that professional development.
So my only thing with the math conversation is that's not a board decision. So it could be a discussion or it could be a presentation potentially, but we don't take any action on that. So just being mindful of, of that.
I would welcome a presentation on it if it's the consensus of the board.
I agree.
I agree too. Content of the presentation, I think we presented a couple of board meetings ago, what, what would you like to see?
Well, I guess that could be a conversation later, after the board meeting with you, Superintendent. The board did vote on, on restoring or the middle school honors program five years ago. So I'm not, I'd like clarity as to, and I don't expect an answer right now. But I guess clarity on whether the board can vote on that or not. Because past conduct, the answer would be yes, we can.
Would you clarify?
But I, I can't point to a code or a policy that says yes or no to that. So if that is an option, you know, I, I would like that to be an option to be considered.
I'll provide you with clarity, we'll, we'll, we'll search it out and get you the clarity, send it to the whole board.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Yep. And then, and then we can talk about, once that clarity is provided, what, what would you like included in the presentation? We can do that at that point.
That's fine.
Okay.
And then the other one is just, you know, we, we adopted that brand new unified professional development. Or teacher collaboration, I guess it is, time on Thursdays. You know, that was done about a year ago. So I think it'd be nice to hear what, what's going on with that.
Can, is there consensus on that one? Just, okay, sounds good.
All right, thank you.
All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order? If not, meeting is adjourned.